All right, good morning, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. It is 9:03. It is Monday, November 17th. All council members are present, town manager, deputy town manager, town attorney, and town clerk. If you please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
As we gather this day for our council meeting, we take a moment to reflect with gratitude and purpose in the spirit of the coming holiday season. May we be reminded of the kindness, generosity, and sense of unity this time of year inspires. We extend our thanks to Karen and wish her well as she moves on to new endeavors. We also offer a warm welcome to Rebecca, whose perspective and commitment will contribute to the important work ahead. May our discussions today be guided by clarity and a shared dedication to the well-being of all who call our island home. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our next item is the acceptance of the certified election results. Town attorney has informed me that we are going to have public comment for these two items. We're going to do them both at the same time. Same rules apply, three minutes. Please remember, there's a lot of people here, so please remember to be respectful. With that, we will start with public comment. Madam Clerk?
Sure. I have Terry Schubert and Steve Antonucci signed up that say recall. And then I have Steve Johnson, that's all I have.
But we'll also have our normal public comment, so if you want to speak at the public comment for these two items, you can speak now, and you can also speak at the public comment at the normal time as well, so... If there's anyone that would like to come up and speak during public comment, yes, sir, come on up.
Right here at the...
It's very gratifying of you to speak this morning.
Make sure that button's on, just identify yourself for us, that one's got the button, never mind. You're good.
Is it working?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you can all hear me. Terry Schubert, Fort Myers Beach resident. Was out on the beach back in 1982. Very pleased, as a former educator, I remember my circus classes in high school, where you talked about a representative democracy, where people represented you, that you did not vote for everything, you had people that represented your opinions. Well, it's nice to see that at the town level we have people that represented us and they did not do what we asked them to do, or did not represent us as the way we wanted them to, with the laws that we have and the zoning ordinances and so forth that we have in our town. So, it'll be nice to see the two new people, like I said, two new people, take over on our board. And hopefully, they will not take advantage of the situation and fill their pockets like the previous people have done. And...
Come on.
And...
Regular order.
Now we have, now we have two new people, and hopefully, they will represent us like the rest, so... The party's over. It's time for you to please leave.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nope, please, no clapping. Come on, let's keep the order, we can, we're all adults here, let's just get through this.
Steve Antonucci, then I have Steve Johnson after.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Steve Antonucci, Fort Myers Beach resident for 30 years. Just like to say that I was part of the recall committee and knocked on hundreds of doors, talked to hundreds of people, and they were very sincere in their feelings that these two people were not representative of the feelings of Fort Myers Beach residents in their actions and their... and their words. So, I'd just like to say that it's... When, when we've been accused of running a scam and a sham, it's not true. Those people knew exactly what they were voting for when they voted, when they signed the petitions, and when they voted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would you have after that?
Steve Johnson.
Oh, didn't see him.
Hi, Steve Johnson, Fort Myers Beach resident. I'm here today really to just talk to Mr. King about the processes that have occurred over the last, really, six months. There were actually 700 individual petition signers, signed petitions for this recall process, which is a considerable amount. So, it's really not, it's not, there isn't a technicality surrounding this. It's really, it's, it's not about you, it's about the process. However, there were a number of things along the way that, that were troublesome. First, there was the emergency resolution to ask the rest of the board to, to vote for your, your legal expenses for, for the purported defenses. Then there was the, the voting to not qualify candidates, again, a stumbling block here to this, this, the whole process. And then the position of recall is a vendetta, it just isn't fair. I think the electorate has spoken, all of the checkmarks have been, have been accomplished. And because there's a technicality hanging out there, I don't think it's fair, really, that, that, that you continue to sit in the seat and, and to represent the electorate. I think they've come out in a landslide and a mandate to suggest otherwise. Also, the, you know, the involvement of PACs was real troublesome. To be provided with the top political consultant in the state, along with the PAC money for those self-interests, is not what this town is about. I mean, who's seen an election like this? I've only been here 15, 16 years, but just, it just doesn't seem right. It's not our homegrown democracy in action. So, I just feel it's still an injustice to remain in that seat. We can't, you're not representing the, the electorate, and consequently, your votes certainly don't either. And there are some important votes coming up, there's a comp plan update. And from, from, I feel like, the community perspective, we prefer to have a new voice, so thank you.
Thank you. Nick, Will, Sheriff.
That's all I have signed up.
Is there anyone else that hasn't signed up that would like to speak during this public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close that public comment. This is our first resolution, this is Resolution 25-322. This is the certification of results of the November 4th, 2025 recall election. This is a resolution of the town, town council of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, accepting the certified results of the November 4th, 2025 recall election from the Lee County canvassing board, staying the public results of the recall election as to council member John King, and recalling council member Karen Woodson and providing for an effective date. Is there a motion or discussion on this resolution? I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 25-322. I'll second. Got motion by Mayor Allers, seconded by council member Safford. Any further discussion? I am an aye, Councilman Safford.
Aye.
Council, council member Woodson? Can she vote, can she not vote?
She, she has a conflict, so she's not voting.
Vice Mayor Adahol?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero with Councilor King and Woodson abstaining. Next is...
May I ask a point of inquiry? Councilor King, you are abstaining based on conflict, or...?
I guess that was decided for me.
I thought that's what you...
Well, I mean, the, the judge has said that the election results shall be made public, but the remainder of that shall be stayed. So, the results have been made public.
So, I would vote aye, then?
You could vote aye.
Then I will vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it will, it passes.
Four to aye.
Four to zero, okay. With Council Woodson abstaining. Next is the second item, Resolution 25-323. This is certification of results of election to fill vacant seats. This is a resolution of the town council, the town, Fort Myers Beach, Florida, accepting the certified results of the November 4th, 2025 election of Rebecca Link to fill the vacant seat resulting from the recall election of council member Karen Woodson and providing for an effective date, providing an effective date. I will make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Safford. Any further discussion? I'm an aye, Councilman Safford.
Aye.
Councilor, Vice Mayor Adahol?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero with Councilor Woodson abstaining. At this time, Karen would like to say a few words, so, council, council member?
Thank you. So, my fellow councilmen, members, town manager, deputy town manager, town attorney, all of the town staff, friends, and members of the community. This morning, as we certify the recall election results, the outcome is clear. Although the recall was baseless, the voters have spoken. I stand before you disappointed that my service to this community has come to an end, but even more so, I'm filled with gratitude and pride in what we have accomplished since Hurricane Ian. First, thank you, each and every one of you who stood by me through this long, ill-founded, and often exhausting process. You volunteered, you made calls, you donated, you showed up at meetings, you had conversations with your neighbors, and you defended the truth even when it wasn't easy. Your support has meant the world to me. I have always believed that leadership is not about holding a title, it's about values. This recall was rooted in misinformation and political opportunism, but we met it with integrity, facts, and hope. I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the campaign we ran, positive, forward-looking, grounded in truth, honesty, and service. And even though today marks the end of my time in office, it does not mark the end of my commitment to those values or to the people of this community who want a better life. To those who voted against the recall, thank you for your trust and support. A healthy community requires open dialogue, and I hope in time, we can continue those conversations without the cloud of political maneuvering hanging above them. As I step aside, I do so with a full heart, knowing that I gave everything I had to this role. I'm confident that the foundations we built together, fairness, transparency, compassion, and willingness to listen, will continue to shape the future. And remember this, an election does not decide our character. A recall does not define our community. We define those things, through our actions, our choices, and the way we treat one another. Fort Myers Beach is my home. I will continue to serve, to advocate, and to fight for the well-being of our businesses and community in every way I can. My role has changed, but my commitment has not. Thank you for believing in me. Thank you for standing with me. And thank you for reminding me every step of the way why public service is an honor. Let's continue moving forward. Thank you.
We're going to take, we're going to take a brief five-minute break to let Karen's going to leave, so... Five minutes. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Our next item of business is the inauguration. This is an oath of office, swearing in of Rebecca Link as town of Fort Myers Beach council member. Rebecca, come on up. What's that? I'd say just go right here in the front. It's her day, wherever she would like to go. This, you know, this is, this is the first real inauguration at a, at an actual dais, if you remember, since pre, pre, this is, you'll be the first one that's actually...
Okay.
I think you and I both were via Zoom, so...
Amy, it went off again. Amy, it's off again.
You will, you'll raise your right hand, put your left hand on the Bible. Okay. Repeat after me.
I will.
I do solemnly swear that I will support...
I do solemnly swear that I will support.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
And government of the United States and the state of Florida.
Government of the United States and the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Fort Myers Beach Town Council.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Fort Myers Beach Town Council.
On which I am about to enter, so help me God.
On which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Can you get her logged in? Can you get her logged into the screen? Oh, you've got an agenda.
I have everything.
Do you want it pulled up on the, do you want it pulled up on the screen?
I'm going to go through onboarding, so they're not ready.
Okay, okay. All right, welcome aboard.
Aye, thank you.
All right, our next item is the reorganization of council of newly elected officials. As Vice Mayor has appropriately said, the most awkward five minutes in, in, in any meeting we have. This is the selection of the mayor and vice mayor pursuant to Section 4.02 and 4.03 of the Town of Fort Myers Beach Charter. We will start with the mayor. Is there any nominations for the seat of, of mayor?
Mr. Mayor, it's my honor to reappoint you or nominate you as mayor of Fort Myers Beach.
Mayor, do you accept the nomination?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Okay.
Is there any other nominations? All those in favor, favor of the nominations signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. Next is the vice mayor. Is there, is there a recommendation or an appointment nomination for vice mayor? Well, I guess I will be the one that does it. I'll be as brief as I can with this, this is a situation that I thought never would come, but here we are. I was, I was elected to this position and, and put in as the mayor and, and to make hard decisions, and I guess I'll be the one that makes the nomination. I took an oath, just like you did, Rebecca, a few, you know, a few years ago, to, to... To, well, years ago, twice, to, 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 to do what was in the best interest of those that elected me. And I believe at this time, where we are at, and I think where we're going, I would make the nomination of, of council member Safford.
Council member, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for the vice mayor position? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. We will take just a brief minute to, do we need to reorganize? Or move seats, or just move, does it matter at this point?
I don't think so, do, does it say vice mayor? So, can we move that, one thing, or just move the other? Yeah, if that's okay. Unless, Scott, do you want to sit next to the mayor?
I like sitting next to you. Well, do, am I supposed to?
Doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter.
It's not necessary. Yeah, I've got my computer set up, let, next meeting, that's welcome.
Was it something I said? Yeah, right?
I've got my computer.
Or that, yeah, yeah, forgot about the computers. All right, next is the approval of the final agenda. There are a few things that are going to be changing. We have a walk-on, a resolution for FPL. We will add that to administrative agenda H, item H, if everyone is okay with that. And then, we also have the two, the two advisory committees, the Public Safety and Anchorage Advisory Committee are not here. However, Jennifer Rusk is from MRF, so she will be speaking under advisory committees. And then also, there's been a, I don't know, Will, if you've had a chance to talk to staff, but there's been a suggestion or a question if we could move the comp plan amendment to the next meeting and still meet our deadline to allow LPA members more time to, to review before we take a final adoption?
Believe that we can. It just is going to make the, once approved on the first, we have to move quickly to get it in. But that's, that's the feedback I have now, I don't have a definitive answer.
So, it can be done, or can't be done?
Jason, why don't you go ahead? Jason and Eddie can address that.
Yeah, Jason Green, Community Development, yes, right? We could adopt on December 1st, is the deadline that we have to...
December 1st.
If we made it our first agenda item to allow you to do what you need to do, should it be adopted? If, if it gets moved to the meeting on the first?
Yes.
If it was one of the first agenda items that we had tackled to allow you time to, still getting it submitted to the state, if it was...
We have, we have time after that adoption, it's just the hearing of the adoption has to be done by December 1st.
Okay.
Mayor, obviously, our preference would be to present some today and discuss it, and maybe that's the intro to moving it to the first, but I don't, that's up to you guys, if you want to do that or not.
What's the, what's the will of the board here as far as, in the council, as far as moving it to the December 1st? Scott?
I really think we need the LPA, I mean, we've all been so busy the last year. I, I think we need to get some fresh eyes on it and get their input and, you know, have some conversations.
Rebecca?
I'm glad that you brought it up, Mayor, because I was going to ask the same, if that we hold off on it.
Okay. I can't say vice mayor. I'm fine waiting until December 1st. John?
12 to 1 is good for me.
Okay, so we'll move that, yes, sir?
Yeah, so that conversation that Scott just brought up is a little bit different than what we just were having. So, did I hear LPA input on that?
Well, I don't know that there's time for it to go back to the LPA at this point, is there? I mean, they, the request was to relook at it and offer suggestions via email.
So, the LPA, if I may, I apologize. The LPA has already found, has given comment on this. So, this would just be any additional comment that you would be asking the LPA for, just as you would for comments from members of the public, before you make your decision on second reading.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not asking for an official meeting, but, you know, we, we received an email yesterday that was well thought out and had some, had some concerns. And, you know, if we can get some more people involved and some more ideas, I think that would benefit the entire community.
Yeah, I think it gives Rebecca, council member Link, some time to go over it. You may or may not have been paying that close attention, but it'd give you some time to review it as well.
I would like to say, Mayor, thank you. I have gone over it, and there were some areas of concern for me as well.
Okay.
I'd like to have the public maybe have a little more input.
Mary, what?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just make a point, and Amy, if I can get a clarification, that the next scheduled LPA meeting is until December 16th.
Okay.
So, we would need to call for a special.
Well, I don't think it's going to go back to the LPA meeting, is it?
If, if they want to discuss it together.
Well, yes, they cannot discuss among themselves, they need to do that in the public. But we could request that they schedule a special meeting, as Will suggested, before your meeting on the first.
Jim, you're the only one here, you, you okay with that?
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, Eddie?
Mayor, council members, if I could, just, in other cities, what, we'll have to, for second reading, you're not required to go back to the LPA, so you have two options here. First option is that the town attorney suggests to provide for the, a special duly notice meeting. So, depending on what your duly notice is, you can provide for that. The other way that the other cities and municipalities have done so is instead of having a meeting, request that the LPA review individually and provide their comments as part of the public comments record to the council, the mayor and council by a certain date, and include that as part of the public hearing process. We will, I do have to note that if you do not take action on December 1st, you start back at square one. You have to go through the entire process again. So, the timeline is very tight. In addition, because you may want or desire changes, if you do not have a conversation to let me know what changes you want, they will have to be done during that meeting because you do have to advertise this, this move to December 1st with all the documents within the confines of the public hearing laws and the timeframe therein.
Okay, well, I certainly think it would be best to go back before the LPA, that way, public can have comment.
So, there, there is a third option, which I think Jason Green may have alluded to, is that you could, you could have your hearing today on the second reading, have discussion, continue your second reading to December the 15th, and then allow for a special meeting by the LPA prior to their adoption.
Respectfully, Madam Attorney, you could begin today, and the council can have a continuance, but it should adopt, it should adopt by December 1st.
I'm sorry, I agree with you, but allowing the LPA to have that special meeting, I think that the two options that have been provided, I, I agree that those are both options. However, I will note that just asking for individual comments from LPA members would really not give them the opportunity to discuss that collegially as a body, which they may want to do. However, I also want to add, just for your consideration, that should you hear the presentation from staff today as a second reading and then choose to continue it to December the 1st for a final vote, the LPA then would also have had benefit of your thoughts and concerns when they have their special meeting, assuming that that can be scheduled. So, there's a couple different options you have.
Well, I would be in favor of just sending it back to the LPA, let them comment. For your, your sake, your time, I would, I mean, if we're going to discuss it, then we might as well go through, but I think it's important to go back and let the public have their comment through the LPA. Then they also have their comments when they come in to speak to us. That would be my preference, but I'm open to my fellow council members to see what they, how they feel about it.
That's fine.
Council King? Council Link?
Fine.
Vice Mayor? Yes. Would you prefer Stafford? All right, then. So, would that be item, that's, that's items F, and then would that also be G?
So, we would, I would recommend strongly, because... So we would, I would recommend strongly, because this is a very important ordinance, that we go ahead and open the public hearing as it appears on the agenda with a motion made to continue it to December the 1st.
Okay.
So that way, the notification is, is documented that it is proper.
And that's just for item F, correct? Excuse me.
Yeah, G, certified recovery. Yes, it is F, correct.
Okay. So we will move F up to before A to be able to open it and then close it?
With continuing it to a time certain, a date certain, December 1st.
Yeah, exactly. With, with Thanksgiving around the corner, you want to make sure that, that doesn't impugn upon your noticing. Sometimes that does affect other communities when you have those specific holidays are, are in your notification time period, so that probably does more than move.
I have every confidence the staff will be able to handle it.
And in the event that the LPA cannot get a quorum for a special meeting, it would still come back to you on December 1st, so we can hit that deadline.
All right. Are there any other changes to the agenda? I know that was a lot. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilor King, second by Vice Mayor Safford. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Next is public comment.
I have nobody signed up currently.
Would anyone like to speak in public comment? Yeah, come on up.
Good morning. Good morning. Terry Kane, 50-year resident of Fort Myers Beach. First, I would like to say congratulations to Rebecca Link and Tom Brady, and thank you very much for being part of our recall effort. I really appreciate, appreciate your time and for stepping up. I stood before this council last year a few times, and asked you to read and listen. The biggest part of your job is to listen. Listen to the residents who filled town hall rooms, listen to emails, listen to the businesses. It's your job to listen. And then compromise for the greater good of the community. You did not listen. Your job is not to make your mind up before you sit down at a meeting. Your job is to make decisions on what you think, and your job is not to make decisions on what you think is right or wrong. Sometimes, if you do your job right, it may not align with your personal feelings. It's not supposed to. Your job is to listen to everyone before and during a meeting. The recall came about because you had a community that was not being listened to. I asked you to read, reread, comprehend, and digest the Fort Myers Beach Winning Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. I don't think you listened. You blamed Hurricane Ian, then Helene, then Milton. The comprehensive plan was written as a vision for the future without hurricanes and with hurricanes, because after all, we are an island community. Our buildings were getting older. We knew growth was in the future. No one was or is against responsible growth. You had an award-winning comprehensive plan, a blueprint already at your fingertips to help with the tough decisions. You didn't listen. Do I sound mad and frustrated? You bet I am, because you chose not to listen. We had to go through a recall to make you listen to what this community had to say. Today, you present a comprehensive plan with a vision up to 2045. Please listen. Fort Myers Beach is a barrier island community. Our economic engine is supported by our natural resources. If you don't think so, ask the workers on this beach how they do during fish kills and algae blooms. Please consult, please, I'm begging today. I begged last year. I'm begging again. Please consult the original comprehensive plan. You have gutted, remember those words? I used them in emails last year. You have gutted the comprehensive plan. I wrote them to, I said that before. The element of the plan so severely that you gutted to put in for the 2045 comprehensive plan was responded to by the South Florida Water Management District. And I quote from your Exhibit A on page five, "The conservation goals, objectives, and policies are lacking in substantive conservation policies and strategies throughout." Not my words, Southwest Florida management on comments on your comprehensive plan. This was not the vision of our community 25 years ago, and I do not believe it's the voters' visions today.
Need you to wrap it up, please.
I know, I know. Oh, I've got 15 seconds.
Okay.
Are you listening? Do we really want to know, be known as the community lacking in substantive conservation policies and strategies? Are you tired of listening to public comment from me? Well, I was at the joint meeting of the LPA, and a nice gentleman from the LPA, I don't know your name, sorry, brought up the lack of the environmental conservation policies in the plan. You did not listen. I suggest the plan be tabled for the moment.
Thank you.
As it allows time.
There's a lot of people.
By this, I mean, I hope you have a workshop with the community.
Appreciate your comments.
Please listen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in public comment? Yes, sir?
Terry Schubert? I just have one comment.
Please pull the mic up so we can hear you.
Pardon me?
Just pull it up. It's harder to hear over there. There you go. That works, too.
I'm a little bit taller than the last person. All right. When I moved to the beach in 2018, I could ride my bike to the dentist's office, to the doctor's office to get my hair cut, so many different things. And all these businesses are now gone. You know, we don't have a doctor on the island. We don't have a dentist on the island any longer. We do have someplace we can get a haircut. But I'm just wondering, what can we do as a community to try to attract businesses to come back? Doctor, Dr. Ullman, she went over to Bonita, and now she's leaving. I believe she's going to Tampa. Is there anything the Chamber of Commerce can do to attract more businesses to our, back to the island? For, I'm just concerned that to go to different professionals, you have to leave the island now. And before you could just walk over or go over to them, they were established on our island. So it would be nice to have them start coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Next, we have a presentation, strategic planning, and update on the strategic plan. Come on in.
Definitely much shorter than he was. Okay, if we could bring up the PowerPoint, please, that would be great.
Is he working on it?
Well, good morning. Angela Christ. I'm the Director of the Florida Institute of Government at the University of South Florida in Tampa. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. Also online, who couldn't be here today, as I like to say, is our partner in crime with St. Petersburg College Collaborative Labs, Tina Fisher. So I just want to briefly walk through with you what I want to cover today. Part of it is really sharing with you what has happened, our methodology, our project plan, reviewing data that's been collected to date. There will be a call to action for you, and then next steps. So just very briefly, we started this process in January of 2025. You guys have had a lot of transition over the course of that time. And so from, obviously, new council members to new town leadership, to new staff. And so I just want you to remember that as I kind of go through some of the data that you've gone through, a lot of transition. So Phase 1 of our process is really a process for gathering and collecting data. And there's several different ways that we were able to do this. So we met with the town council and did a kickoff retreat. Many of you participated. It was very successful. We already, we also met, excuse me, with town leadership and did something similar. If you go to the current website, there's information currently and has been on there since we started this process in regards to communications outreach. We conducted stakeholder interviews, resident survey, community forums, employee survey, employee focus group. And so here we are today is the report to you on, on all of the data we've collected. Phase 2 is what we like to call the design of the plan. And this is where you take all of the data that we've collected. You have an opportunity to go through all of the reports, which you will be getting, and look through those. And then we come back and really try to dive into that kind of clear vision, mission, goals, and objectives. So that's what Phase 2 will be, will be the design of the plan. And then Phase 3 is the actual implementation, where there will be some strategies for supporting implementation as well as implementing, implementation plan facilitation. Okay, so just some quick highlights that I just wanted to go over with you. We did several activities, kind of looking at, again, as you're working with the community and you're listening to the community, is, is that how do we make sure that you interact with one another? And so one of the things that we did was we did a exercise that was yes and, right? So it's the year 2034, you're envisioning where you want to be. And so some of the things that we heard from you was resiliency, making sure that you are focused on compromise, strong buildings, the history, the culture, the environment, not losing that unique vibe for the town of Fort Myers Beach, and again, protecting quality of life. So as we worked on communications outreach, I just want to make sure, again, that if, if the public has not seen it, if, if you have not had a chance, please, please, please go to the website. The information is there in terms of our project timeline. Just briefly, I conducted 22 stakeholder interviews over the course of approximately four weeks. Everyone was asked the same questions. It was pretty much a traditional SWOT analysis with a few tweaks. We did look at just some kind of highlights of what we heard through that. And so again, having a clear vision that everybody agreed upon, there was discussion of including the residents in every part of that vision. There was some sentiment around the transition and the challenges between leaders and the town, as well as really needing a more fruitful process, if you will, for engaging citizens and how to go about that. We heard a lot of good things about the staff and how they have been amazing through the transition. And so we used that information as well as the first information and created a resident feedback survey. So I am hoping that many of those in the room had the opportunity to complete it. But just very briefly, 330 residents participated in the survey. Again, point of clarification, this was in May and June of 2025. So I just want to make sure that that was the timeframe. Almost 96% of those that responded reported owning their home, with only 2.8% were renters. About 62% of the respondents lived in single-family homes, and about 35% resided in condominiums or townhomes. I just want to hit a couple of highlights for you that came out of the resident survey. And so there was strong support from residents for multimodal and sustainable infrastructure. Again, almost 86% supported further investing in, in enhancements such as walking, biking, golf cart infrastructure, et cetera. And when you receive the report, you will see on Table 10, this is very clear in there. Same thing, again, kind of open-ended, 43% concerned about traffic congestion, et cetera. I don't think that's new to any of you. And then, again, walkability and reduced vehicle reliance was something that the residents were interested in. Overdevelopment and loss of the community character, we asked some open-ended questions, and 63% of residents identified that as a significant long-term challenge, and I want to be clear about that long-term challenge. In addition to that, interestingly enough, only about 17% felt that the town is rebuilding too quickly. And then there was this concern, and I had already mentioned it before, about residents being concerned that the town could be unrecognizable and losing its small-town feel. Just a couple of other highlights, and again, remember, this was in May and June of 2025. Some residents offered mixed ratings of town services, some with code enforcement permitting. There was some dissatisfaction. And then some, 40%, which is a little bit high, were uncertain, you know, were unsure about certain services. So either they hadn't experienced them, or they just didn't really understand them. Again, communication, we heard a lot about that in the beginning. Interestingly enough, 70% are satisfied with access to information. So your staff is doing a good job of putting emails out there, or using the website, or Facebook, or whatever it may be. So that, that's wonderful to hear. As well as 71% of your residents that responded use Facebook to get their information. So that's a significantly high number, with 69% using the town website. And then I think this is really impressive, that almost 91% agreed that your staff are courteous and respectful when providing services. That's, that's a very high statistic. You should be very proud of that. Only 60% felt that their concern was resolved in a reasonable timeframe. However, there are, again, extenuating circumstances to that. And then I think the biggest thing that came out of the resident survey was this divide among the town's overall direction. And I think that that is apparent in the statistics. And so you had almost 60% expressing some dissatisfaction, but then you had almost 30%, 20, or excuse me, 28% saying that they were very dissatisfied with the overall direction the town was taking. So, and then, again, the broader concerns were still there, but I just wanted to bring those to your attention. Again, as I said, we use a participatory process. So all of the data that was collected up until this point, we then used in Community Forum 1. So it's not that the data stands alone, but it's that it builds from one of our deliverables to the next, because we want it to be as inclusive as possible. And so Community Forum 1, you'll see the beautiful graphic there, which kind of really explains. It was, it was, it was actually, I thought, well-attended and a lot of engagement. And so we kind of came out of, out of that first community forum with some of the things, again, civility, respect, getting involved, again, how do residents want to effectively engage, having the ability for them to speak up and be heard. We also heard, again, I don't think this is anything new, but again, you can see there's this, I guess, kind of benchmarking that we're starting to see across the different groups. And so when we took, take, took a look at things that you, as a town, needed to address, we heard the division of the community, the urgency to build back, infrastructure, stormwater, drainage. And then we also asked a question around what do they value most and what do they not want to change? Identity, natural beauty, and the resiliency of the community. Okay. And then, so as I mentioned, we take all of this data, and we start to now see kind of these, what I would call themes or buckets, areas that have kind of risen to the top. And so we started seeing seven emerging strategic themes that have come forward. And again, these are not set in stone. This is just a starting point for us as we go into Phase 2 with all of you. And so the first one is restoring, rebuilding, and redevelopment. The second was infrastructure, and this was very broad. Again, these all need to be defined. But as we went through the data, these are what popped up. popped up, communications and leadership. Economic development, heard a lot about that, and again, that was the full-time residents, seasonal residents, tourists coming in, it's kind of that balancing act of all of those things. And so, preservation, we heard a lot about the mound house, again, preserving the natural beauty, environmental sustainability, and then obviously, transportation. So those are kind of what's come to the top, based on all of the data. We also did an employee survey, and this was done in August of 2025. We had 66 responses out of 80, which is fantastic. And so, I would just say that while there are some areas for improvement with compensation remaining as the central concern, I would say that the culture and the supervisor relationships are strong. Employees generally feel positive about their direct supervisors. You know, there were some concerns, maybe at a higher level, and again, remember, this was done in August, around some, some better teamwork and collaboration. I would also say that even though there were prior concerns, the employees are very optimistic about the new leadership, and so, very happy to hear that. Values align with the organization, which is fantastic. And then, again, I'm sure, nothing new to all of you, but I do want to point it out for your employees, is that they're still feeling kind of that pressure of doing more, right, with less, and so, limited staffing, feeling the burnout. And so, I just wanted to draw that to your attention. And then, the last thing that we did was an employee focus group, and so, thank you to everybody who participated. It was a very interactive input from the employees, and we conducted a SWOT analysis with them. And so, as you'll see, and you will be able to read through the full report, but again, what they came to the table with is very much what we heard from the citizens, from, from you, from the residents. And so, just a couple of things that I would, I guess, point out, that I thought was really good, was looking at doing a continued proactive approach with more transparency. I thought that was a really interesting point that came forward from the employees. So it's, it's that they are embracing that, and they would like to be proactive in what they're doing. And then, obviously, using technology, finding ways to be more efficient using technology. And then, the only other thing I would say is probably looking at being able to do some more planning and forecasting, and that goes kind of with everyone having that clear vision together. Okay, we're coming to the end. So, I think, round of applause, you guys, it has been a long process, but we have been able to get through phase one. Phase two is set for December the 3rd, and we will be with all of you, I believe we're in this room. And so, you will be getting an email that has all of the real-time records and all of the reports that I mentioned today. My call to action to you is, please, read through those and come with questions that you may have. So you have this, you have the PowerPoint, which I've highlighted a bunch of things, but you will also get the full reports. And so, we cannot be successful with what we're going to do with all of you on December 3rd if you do not review the reports. Okay? That's my call to action for you. So I just, I shared this with the staff, and I wanted to share this with you, because I think it's really important, you know, it's really easy to go down a rabbit hole when you don't feel that things are going well, and there's a lot of transition. And so, Deloitte, every year, they have a Center for Government Insights, and they usually produce videos or articles around kind of trends transforming local government. And so, I just want to say, you're not alone. I think that is the message that I shared with the employees, is that, you know, being able to deliver lower-cost, higher-value government, looking at ways to use AI in government, reducing red tape, which is so difficult, public, public service modernization using those technologies, the future-ready infrastructure. So remember, Deloitte is an international company, this was done all over the world, where they collected data to provide us this. Obviously, quality of life, looking at, you know, what are the jobs of the future, if you will? And then, so I just wanted to share this with you, because you'll see on the circle on the right, you know, again, looking at unique funding sources, cross-sector, you know, solutions, if you will, looking at how do you digitally deliver on something. So I just want to say that the challenge, more than ever, in government right now, is that strive to bridge the gap between promise and performance, and you're not alone in doing that. So, go through the reports, come prepared on December 3rd, and just remember, planning is bringing the future into the present, so that you can do something about it now. And I am happy to take questions, if there are any.
Councilor King, any questions for Angela?
No.
I look forward to reviewing your materials, but I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Link?
I do, Angela, thank you for your work. I love strategic planning. I have a question for you, Angela, as well as any of the other councilors. I'm wondering, how does this marry, not the details of your strategic plan, but the vision that you heard? So I, when I was reviewing the comprehensive plan, I wondered, how do you work with that? So that the vision you heard and the strategic planning is also the same vision we have in our comprehensive plan, because they appear different to me right now.
Yes, so that's, that is a question we get every time we do this in a community. And so, the way that we think about it is that the comp plan is only one piece of the strategic plan, okay? And so, when you guys come together on December 3rd, we will be taking a look at all of this data that I just went over, and as well as reviewing any of the, what we would call, we'll do like an environmental scan, if you will, where it's kind of looking at the other plans. So here's what the comp plan is saying, here's what this is saying, and then we're going to come together and decide, you will decide, that high-level vision and mission. We always start with the vision, not the mission, right? Because the vision is that desired future state. It's not why you exist, the mission is why you exist. And so, the comp plan is a piece of the strategic plan, but the comp plan is not the strategic plan. I want to make that very clear.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilor Link?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, you're welcome.
Vice Mayor Safford?
No, but I want to thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely, yes, it's been a pleasure at camp. We're ready for phase two.
Great, I am too, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Angela. All right, next we have local achievements and recognitions, Councilor King?
I'd just like to recognize the whale on their grand opening, it was a very impressive building, delicious food, ribbon cutting was very successful, congratulations to them, and watch the illumination parade on Saturday, and it was just a fantastic parade to watch. I mean, I'm not a parade person, but I really, really enjoyed that, the whale illumination and the dragon were ones that specifically come to mind, but just watching it walk down the beach in the, in dusk, and, and the number of participants, so congratulations to all those people.
Councilor Adel.
Good morning, everyone. I would say, a couple of things this morning, I would say, first of all, thank you for our town clerk this morning, that was a beautiful prayer of unity, and obviously, he put some thought into that, and I appreciated those words very much. I wanted to thank Councilor Woodson for her service, and I welcome Rebecca, and welcome your service as well. Want to take a point of personal privilege if I could, don't do this very often, but last week, Brendan and I were blessed with a, and are blessed with a, and our first grandchild, so I would congratulate my grandson, Arthur Adams Aderhold, and my son and daughter-in-law out in Colorado. We're excited to spend some more time with them, and again, thank you for the time, thank you.
Councilor Link?
Yes, so, being new, I want to thank town manager, Will Tracy, deputy town manager, and three of their staff, who took time, very valuable time, to start to get me up to speed. I got to see a little peek behind the curtain, and I must say that I walked away very impressed, and I think this town is going to see great things coming out of this place as they continue to evolve, so I was excited when I left, and I thank you for your time.
Vice Mayor?
First of all, Rebecca, welcome. I look forward to working with you. I'd like to give a shout-out to our former vice mayor, I've got some big shoes to fill, I'm going to thank you for everything you've done since the hurricane, you've been a true leader. And it's going to be, you know, my, my honor and privilege to, to serve as vice mayor. From a community standpoint, I want to-
Congratulations on that, Scott.
Thanks. We had a great, the Community Foundation, we had a great event on Saturday. We had a pickleball tournament, raised a lot of money for the Community Foundation. Beach Kids, I'm sorry, Beach Kids Foundation. It was a great, well-attended event, there's a lot of participants. Unfortunately, I lost to Will 11 to 10, so, and Jason. It's a hard-fought battles, like one of our tennis battles, Jim. But it, it was, it was a great event. I hope they, I hope they do it again next year.
Yeah, well, yeah, welcome, Rebecca, congratulations. Thank Karen Woodson for her service, as I said before, she stepped up at a time when we were at our worst, and she's been through a lot, as the rest of us have, so, well, I wish her the best in her next endeavors. I didn't get to say it at the beginning, but Jim, thank you for working alongside me over the last three years. We made a great team, wish it would have continued, but I completely understand. Congratulations to your, your, your new, your new grand, I get to call you grandpa now?
Sure.
Okay, no more vice mayor, now it's grandpa. And all the things that Councilor King said as well, congratulations to the whale opening, it's been busy there every single day, there's a lot of buzz around it, and talking to some of the other businesses around there, it's really that old adage of, you know, high ties raise all boats, and all the other businesses around there have, have seen an increase over last year's numbers. So, that's just a good step moving forward, and the illumination parade was, was really fun, I got a chance to watch it kick off, there was a lot of kids that were involved, which, which was really important. Unfortunately, our, our solar lights kicked on at the wrong time, as they were, they were going down the street, so you didn't get to see much, but, you know, that's just part of life, but it was a great event, so looking forward to maybe seeing it bigger and better next year.
With that, we have Advisory Committee items and report, Jennifer Rusk.
Good morning, Jennifer Rusk, resident, good morning to staff and to council members. Congratulations, Councilwoman Link. I, if I may approach, I'd like to hand you some paperwork that I'm going to be discussing.
Sure.
Jennifer, do you have an extra copy for the clerk, for the public records?
I didn't hand one to you. Okay, I'm here today to report that Murph Committee approved the second edition of printing 20,000 more copies of the children's book. I would like to give my thanks to the town staff, and the town council, and to our community. I would also like to thank Mary Rose Beletta, and all the Murph members from the past and the present. A special thanks to Mrs. Hekstrom for her donation during the, this past Thursday's meeting. She donated $500 to go towards the third edition, once the second edition runs out. Lastly, I'd like to thank, to thank all of the educators, the friends of Fort Myers Beach Mound House, Turtle Time Inc., Crow, and all the nonprofits and businesses who have contributed to the printing costs. Fort Myers Beach Community Foundation, the Beach Chamber Water Foundation, and the Alex King Group. I'm here to get your blessing, to go ahead and start printing these 20,000. And a huge thank you to Fort Myers Beach Library and Liz for helping with the storage of these books. I've been holding off on ordering these books, one because my house and my garage has flooded twice last year, and I'm scared to order all these children's books, and then I lose them. So, thank you to the Fort Myers Beach Library for offering to store them. And I just, if you have any questions?
John, any questions for Jennifer?
No, go ahead and print them.
Jim?
Thank you.
Rebecca?
I almost always have a comment. I love these things, and I'm wondering where people get them. As a renter, as a, having a home that I rent, I would always find, when I returned, that there'd be crayons there, and kids were coloring. It's a great way to give kids something to do when they're at your homes, and I'm wondering if there's a place, or if we can get some of them for our renters.
Sure, I can certainly bring them to you, but again, like I said, the Fort Myers Beach Library will be storing the boxes. Each box contains, I believe, about 79 books. I don't have crayons, but, but the books, yes. Yes, but you, the public can get these at all different areas, lots of resorts have them to hand them out, grocery stores, lots of places, the Chamber of Commerce at the Roxy, they have them, and so.
Thank you, I would encourage people who rent their properties to have a few on hand, it's a good educational tool.
Thank you, I agree.
Yeah, I, I have them in every one of my vacation rental properties, they're fantastic. Don't, would you like to tell everyone where you're going to be next Saturday?
Yes, I was going to, thank you for, for leading me into that. I will be at the Sandcastle Event on Saturday, the 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and you can stop by and get stickers and posters and coloring books and crayons and reusable water bottle stickers, that, let's see, we, we'll have all kinds of things from FWC, FDEP, sorry, not FDEP, FWC and other organizations like the Manatee Club and things like that.
That's great, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, so the page that you have has the QR, so the difference in the book that you have in front of you, and the new page, is, I thought it would be really nice for the people that have contributed to have their logo and their QR code, so those are some changes that were made to the book, if that's all right with you.
I think it's fantastic.
I'm hoping we have a much bigger third edition, so if anyone wants to contribute, you can contribute to the Town of Fort Myers Beach Marine Environmental Resource Task Force.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. And, welcome again, Rebecca Link, and as I always say to all of you, make good decisions. Thank you for your service.
Next is our approval of minutes from the town council meeting from October 20th, 2025, and November 3rd of 2025, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
The town council meeting minutes on October 20th, say Chair and Vice Chair, it should be corrected to read Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. Next is our consent agenda, which we don't have anything, followed by the items removed from consent agenda, which obviously we do not have anything, which brings us to our public hearings. The next four items on our agenda are public hearings for review of various land use requests for the benefit of the public. Please be aware that they are, these items are quasi-judicial in nature, our attorney will further explain.
So, Mayor, you also have three legislative matters before you today, and if I understood you wanted to go ahead and move one of those legislative items forward?
Yes.
That would have been number F.
F, yes.
We would need to read the title and then make a motion to continue that.
Okay. This legislative item is a second reading and a public hearing on proposed ordinance 24-10. This is an ordinance of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, amending the Town of Fort Myers Beach Comprehensive Plan in its entire entirety pursuant to 163.31843 Florida statutes providing for adoption of the Town of Fort Myers Beach Comprehensive Plan 2045, including amendments to the future land use element and the future land use map, the community design element, the transportation element, the housing element, the historic preservation element, the utilities element, the conservation element, the coastal management element, the recreation and open space element, the intergovernmental coordination element, the capital improvements element, and the property rights element, inclusive of all associated tables, exhibits, and maps, authorizing findings and administrative actions, providing for transmittal, providing for severability, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. We will now open the public hearing and open it to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak for public comment? Good morning again.
Good morning again, it's Terry Kane. Uh-oh, I've got to, I want to thank you for reviewing this yet again. I specifically, in the conservation element, I want you to read what was gutted out of the plan. I want you to look at the future land use map in the comprehensive plan, giving you a real quick thing to go look at and see what was taken away from us, see what's taken away from this community by taking away environmentally critical zones. That would be all the beach fronts, it would be Bowldge Point, it would be Little Astero Island, and make it a different future land use. That was very upsetting to me. I didn't sleep Saturday night after I read it. I started to read the new plan thinking, oh, I'll read this and I'll go to sleep. Well, 4 o'clock in the morning, I still wasn't asleep. So, please, read that plan and see what it says, and thank you. We need more time on this, and I'm sorry we're under a constraint, but I'm hoping that we can have some kind of a roundtable, some kind of a workshop. In the old days, we used to call it charrettes, nobody knows what that word means anymore, and we would just get a room full of people, throw all the ideas out on the table, pick out the best, always the cream of the crop raises to the top, and we just need that because you're considering 2024, it's what we did 25 years ago, and this is a vision for 20 years, so please, please think about it. The results and the responsibility of this plan is at your feet. It's not the contractor's fault what happened here, it's not Coradino, it's not his blame because you are approving this, so it's your responsibility to read it and comprehend it and see what our future is going to look like. They can only work with what they were given, and I don't know where they got some of their ideas, but I'm not real happy about it. I think the plan, especially the conservation element, is a bit sloppy, and I hope that it wasn't intentional. So, thank you very much, and for, I hope that there's some kind of a meeting we can have with the community, whether it be through the LPA or a town council, to have some kind of an emergency workshop. I think it's well needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Mr. Murphy?
Morning, Council, staff. Ray Murphy for the record. I just want to echo Terry Kane's comments there. When the, when the comprehensive plan was created, backed by the original council, what Terry spoke of were these community charrettes that were held down in Bay Oaks, and I think I discussed these with you on my way out after the storm, but what those charrettes involved were easels, 40, 50 easels in Bay Oaks. The whole community was invited, and, and a lot of the community showed up, a lot of them. Many of those community members who voted in this recall election were here then, and that was the basis of their vote because they still believe in what happened when that plan was created. So, anything you can do to be transparent and to get the community involved in such a magnanimous undertaking as editing the comprehensive plan should be taken. Fill Bay Oaks with people, advertise it, get people out, like they came out originally. It's that important. The people have spoken to that, spoken loudly, that they believe in the comprehensive plan, and they want participation in, in, in seeing the future. They pretty much told you the way they want it, and they want it to continue that way, but they want to be involved in that process, and anything less than that is not satisfactory. So, again, to reiterate, get people involved in that process. I don't think it's happened so far. I don't really think it's happened. I'll conclude with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Is there a motion to move this to our meeting on December 1st?
Continue to a date certain of December 1st.
Continue to, December 1st.
So moved.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor Safford. I'll second. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Safford?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Councilmember Link?
Aye.
Councilmember Aderhold?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Nancy, take it away.
Thank you. So, there we, we do have four items on your agenda today, these are quasi-judicial in nature. Zoning revisions, special exceptions and variances. These require that today's public hearing comply with procedural requirements that have been established in Florida law and in our land development code. So, our quasi-judicial proceedings will be less formal than a proceeding before Circuit Court, but they will be more formal than the remainder of the meeting, and we must follow basic standards of due process that requires that certain notices be provided, the application of the correct standards, and that your decisions be made on competent and substantial evidence that is presented to you today, either in written documents or through oral testimony. Your responsibility today is to evaluate that testimony and information for each of these quasi-judicial items, and then draw a conclusion regarding whether the criteria that has been established in the land development code or in state law has been satisfied. So, speculation or just an opinion that is not based on competent facts cannot legally be considered by you in evaluating an agenda item. Testimony by professionals who have been qualified as experts in a particular area has been viewed as competent evidence by Florida courts, as well as testimony by neighbors and residents who have fact-based information such as minutes, surveys, engineering reports, or if their testimony is based on their personal information. Your decision is final. If a decision of approval is not obtained, or if there's a tie vote to deny, then the matter being considered is denied unless majority present and voting agree by motion before the next agenda item is called to take some other action in lieu of the denial. The basis for the denial needs to be stated in the motion. The denial cannot be based on a determination of public support or public opposition to an application. The reason for your denial cannot be arbitrary, discriminatory, or unreasonable, and should be based on a lack of competent and substantial evidence in support of a specific criteria. So, members of the public, those of you who are present, if you intend to speak, please keep my comments in mind, and when you come forward, if you could please state your name clearly for the record, and whether or not you have been sworn in, and your qualifications or your interest in the matter. So, for purposes of efficiency, before we begin these quasi-judicial hearings, I would like to go ahead and take care of a few items consistent with the procedures that we follow. The first is, I need to inquire of the town clerk whether or not all these agenda, quasi-judicial agenda items have been properly noticed pursuant to our land development code.
Yes, they have been.
Also, if any member of the town council has a conflict of interest that would prohibit them from voting on any of these four quasi-judicial matters, this would be an appropriate time to make that disclosure so we can make sure that we have a quorum present for the review of the item.
Councilor King?
No conflicts.
Councilmember Aderhold?
None.
Councilor Link?
None.
Vice Mayor Safford?
None.
I have none as well.
So, in our quasi-judicial hearings, we do ask that those providing testimony do so under oath, and at this time, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make testimony part of the record for a particular quasi-judicial item, if you would please stand and raise your right hand, and the town clerk will administer an oath.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All parties have been sworn.
So, we are now ready for agenda item A.
All right. The, this is a, the first item is a quasi-judicial item. It is the, it is a first reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 25-21. If, if approved at first reading, a second reading and final adoption hearing will be scheduled for December 15th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. or at another time identified by town council. This is an ordinance of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions or denying an amendment to the Commercial Plan Development, CPD, approved by ordinance 24-18, for the property located at 1668 I Street, Fort Myers Beach, generally identified as strap number 19-46-24-W4-0070B.0110 in Fort Myers Beach, providing for an amendment to the deviations to include a deviation to allow three signs of total of 108 square feet, where a maximum one sign of 32 square feet is permitted, providing for conflict of law, Scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date. If any town council member has had any ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed, and identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of the site. Councilor King?
Nothing that I recall.
Councilmember Aderhold?
I've certainly frequented the establishment many times, but I've, I've not had any contact on this particular provision that's before us today.
Very good. Councilor Link?
No contact, but I do know the location.
Vice Mayor Safford?
I'm quite familiar with the property, but I have not had any conversations about this issue with them.
Yeah, I'm also very familiar with the property, been there several times, but have not had any communication based on this item. Is it Jason? Going to be, you're going to, Jason, Jason Green has been qualified as an expert already by this town council, based on his education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? Please come on up.
My name is Renee Oy, I've been sworn in. I am here with Sign Permits Plus, who is a company representing the owner. I have been in the sign business or sign permitting business for over 25 years.
Any questions for Renee? John?
None.
Jim?
None.
Rebecca?
None.
Scott?
Not this time.
All right. I will make a motion to accept Renee as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay. And has the property owner applicant seen a copy of the agenda backup materials from staff?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Jason.
Good morning, Jason Green, Community Development. It's a pretty straightforward request, it's an amendment to the CPD, which was approved in 2024, and again, as you mentioned, Mayor, the, the purpose of the request is to allow for deviations to the sign regulations. There's really only two ways to do that, that's through a variance or through a deviations, and since it already had a CPD, that was the best route. Just to make a note, this is one of the things that came up that we've recognized, we need another process and a way to do sign deviations rather than going back through the CPD process, so that'll be part of your land development code updates, looking at that, because it's a little bit too long of a process to be able to get a sign variant, deviation. As mentioned, there's three, up to three signs, up to 108 square feet, is what they've requested, based on the findings in staff report, find that recommend, staff recommends approval with conditions, and the staff report includes the additional conditions to that CPD, and specifically related to the sign only.
Scott, any questions for Jason?
Not at this time.
Rebecca?
No.
Jim?
None.
John?
Nothing.
Thank you. Renee?
Good morning. As, as Jason has pointed out, they, the beach bar is requesting a minor amendment to the CPD to allow for three signs. It's a larger sign area, but they aren't all going on one side of the building. There's an existing small logo on the front of the building, and they wish to add a small logo on the side of the building and one on the rear, which would be facing the beach area. It is an unusual property in that it is located on I Street, which is parallel to Astero Boulevard, but you need to pull off of Astero to get to I Street, and it's also accessed from the beach, so you have both pedestrian and vehicular access, and it's important to be able to identify the building to all of those who are going to be attending. Apparently, you all know where it is, but you have a lot of tourists in this area.
May have stumbled across it once or twice.
Who may not know, and, and if you're coming up from the beach and you, and you know that there's a place, I heard that there's a beach bar up here, we certainly want them to clearly navigate to that spot so that, you know, the, having identification on the rear of the building that just simply says the beach bar in non-illuminated turtle-friendly letters, as well as the side sign is also non-illuminated, is, is important. As you're driving down Astero Boulevard, you can see the building, but there are, there is some visibility issues with the existing front sign in that there's a palm tree. At the point where you would turn off the road, it's, you either have to turn before you get to the building or afterwards on Avenue E to navigate to I Street, and so it's not a clear turn. So, so having clear identification, and you've talked about increased traffic, and how important, you know, it is for people to be able to navigate that turn, is something that, that I would like for you to consider. The setback from, of the building is about 200 feet, over 200 feet from Astero Boulevard, so that's also a consideration when we're placing signs is, you know, can they be, can they be read? The, the design of the signs, I think, I believe you have them in your packet, is architecturally compatible with the building. They are pleasing in design, pretty simple and straightforward, they incorporate the yellow of the awnings that are on the building. They are certainly consistent with the neighborhood. There are other similar businesses who have signs that have been allowed to both face the beach and the street, so by granting this, this minor amendment, and we're certainly not giving them any privileges that have not been afforded to other businesses in the area. They, of course, agree to comply with all of the conditions of approval, as well as, you know, adequately permit, go through the permitting process to ensure that the, the signs meet the code.
All right.
Any additional questions?
John? Questions for Renee? John?
So, Jim, sorry.
That's all right.
Uh, no.
Jim?
Nothing, thank you.
Rebecca?
Nothing.
Scott?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. All right, public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak in public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Is there? I assume you have no additional comments based on no public comment.
That's all right.
I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or motion from town council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reason, or a continuance to a time certain.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move approval of ordinance 25-21.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Aderhold, seconded by Vice Mayor Safford. Any further discussion? Councilmember Aderhold?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Safford?
Aye.
Councilmember Link?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Is there? I assume you have no additional comments, based on no public comment. I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or motion from town council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reason, or a continuance to a time certain.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move approval of ordinance 25-21.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Adherold, seconded by Vice Mayor Safran. Any further discussion? Councilmember Adherold?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Safran?
Aye.
Councilmember Link?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a quasi judicial agenda item, is the first reading in public hearing on proposed ordinance 25-22. If approved at first reading, a second reading and final adoption hearing will be scheduled for December 15th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. or at another time identified by the town council. This is an ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions or denying an amendment to the commercial plan development, CPD, approved by ordinance 24-15, for the property located at 125, 131 through 151 School Street and 266, 2661-2681 Estero Boulevard, Fort Myers Beach, generally identified as strap numbers 19-46-24-W3-0020C dot 0230, 19-46-24-W3-0020C dot 0270, 19-46-24-W3-0020C dot 0290, in Fort Myers Beach, providing for revisions to the schedule of permitted uses to include outdoor consumption of alcohol beverages on the property as a use associated with the approved hotel and restaurant uses, providing for conflict of law, scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Jason Green has already been, has already been qualified as an expert by this town council, based on his education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use, planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? All right. Go ahead, Jason.
Great. Good morning, Jason Green Community Development again. It's another amendment to a commercial plan development. It was approved last year under ordinance 24-15. And as you've mentioned, was adding two areas, a 3,000 square foot rooftop patio and a 690 square foot outdoor space. Again, the consumption on premise is all part of the restaurant, but our code requires this, the, either a special exception or amendment to your CPD to do the outdoor alcohol consumption. So, that's the request that they have before you is to add those two areas. And as staff has provided a updated two conditions of approval, recommendation of approval with those conditions, and the LPA voted 6-0, recommending approval to you. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
John, any questions for?
Nothing currently.
Jim?
You say the LPA voted unanimously in support, Jason?
Yes, sir, 6-0.
What is the distance for additional consideration of a proposal like this to a, to a, to an elementary school?
The, let me check here, I got it written down.
I'm understanding it's 500 feet.
Yeah, so the, the code lists religious institutions, schools, parks, residents, and then other alcohol establishments is generally what we look at for trying to measure how far they are within that 500 feet or approximately, yes.
Is it the case that this is, this particular application is beyond 500 feet?
That is correct, based on, I believe, some GIS measurements from property to property. I don't, I don't believe any of those uses are within 500 feet.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Councilor Link?
Can you, can you please, Jason, advise if this is just for residents of the establishment or outside folks would park and go there as well?
Well, there, there's going to be a restaurant on site, so it's just, obviously, alcohol consumption is permitted by right for a restaurant use.
Right, but the outdoor space.
It's the, it's the outdoor part of it that our code triggers. I'm assuming that was written that way for noise and other things for consideration. So, as with all these CPDs, they have to amend for the outdoor seating part. I don't know why that wasn't included in the first one, but I just know they've realized through the process, they knew that outdoor seating area. So, I would defer to the applicant if he wants to tell you why they came back for that.
So, my question is whether or not residents, locals can walk in there and go upstairs, or it's just for the guests?
Well, we'll get to him in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like your question is directed more at the applicant than Jason.
For us, it's a restaurant use, which would be open to the public generally, whether they operate that way or not, I don't know. But from us, as you're standing, it's the outdoor seating part of that restaurant triggers the COP use.
Thank you.
And that's something that's unique to your code from other places, is COP, consumption on premise, is a use in your code that has to be part of the, the list of uses if you're going, especially if you're going to have the outdoor seating.
Thank you.
Scott?
From the LPA meeting, were there any additional amendments to the conditions?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we're back here with this parking issue. It, I, my question is going to be similar to Rebecca's, as far as being open to the public. There's a lack of parking already. The staff doesn't see an issue with potential open to public restaurant bar adding to that already dilemma?
Yes, some of that is responsibility of the property owner, I guess, right for a successful business, providing that. But there's, I think, the theme of the town was the park wants mindset, so we would just, we would estimate there's a ton of pedestrian traffic that would obviously go to this place.
Yeah, I mean, the park wants works great if there's a place to park.
Correct. If there is a place to park, yes.
Okay.
We are seeing a lot of those lots coming back online, and those agreements that properties have, we just had that discussion last week, those joint parking agreements between businesses are coming up again. So, we'll be coming to you, I guess, with the code, talking about that, how that works, and if it's working.
Okay.
Yeah, another question maybe?
Yeah, absolutely.
I have another question, Jason. I do think this one is for you.
Okay.
So, you said you believe that the school is 500 feet, 500 feet?
Yeah, I got, yeah, the staff report had some measurements here. Let me look them up for you. Where'd it go? Yeah, so I believe by the staff report, you said there's, it's 3,000 feet to a religious facility, 550 feet from a school, and then more than 4,000 feet to a daycare, 780 feet to a park, 650 feet to another establishment serving alcohol, and more than 500 feet to a dwelling unit under separate ownership. And obviously, those numbers change as uses change and come and go sometimes.
My question to you is, I believe when I read through the original, is that there were going to be some shared parking spaces with Bay Oaks, if I understood that or remember it correctly? So, my concern is, would any of those be within the 500 feet? Not that we have someone who had one too many be walking to their car that is parked next to the school?
Sure.
Or in, in that community area? Do you know about that?
It's a good question. I don't know the distance of the parking spaces, but they would be on the side facing the school, I believe, if they're on the, in between the, the park and the school, yes.
That's something I'd, I'd like clarified.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Sir?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. For the record, Keith Long, attorney with Long Law, representing cottages at Myerside LLC, the applicant and property owner of the Myerside at the aforementioned 125, 131 through 151 School Street and 2661 through 2681 Estero Boulevard. Staff has indicated we're here to request a minor amendment to the CPD that was approved under ordinance 25-15, to amend the schedule of uses to add the outdoor consumption on premise. Again, very, very limited amendment here. The original CPD was approved under 24-15, allowed mixed use projects with lodging, or it was a mixed use project with lodging units, live work units, and commercial space, which included the aforementioned restaurant and bar area. So, what we're doing here today is requesting an outdoor amendment to include the schedule of uses for the outdoor consumption on premise component of the already approved restaurant. So, you've got in the packets that are available to you, I have a presentation, but I don't know that it got, made its way through. You'll see the outdoor portion, that is the Estero Boulevard frontage for approximately 690 feet, and then the, the rooftop area. To answer your questions, the rooftop area is going to be limited to the, the patrons of the hotel and the guests, and then the downstairs portion, the outdoor square footage was already contemplated under the original CPD. We're just here to basically allow for the already approved consumption on premise indoors in conjunction with that restaurant to extend outward of that. I can't speak to why that wasn't included in the beginning, but as Mr. Green has indicated, your, your code is unique with respect to the fact that all outdoor consumption on premise does have to come before the town in one form or another, typically on before you for a special exception. But today, because this was already approved under a CPD, the vehicle here is the amendment to the schedule of uses. As far as the school consideration, the staff report does indicate that it is outside of that 500 feet. I guess I could speak to the school portion as well. There is a provision in Florida statute that, that essentially says anything within 500 feet of a school is, needs an additional review by the local municipality, whether that's the town or the unincorporated county. It's not necessarily not right prohibition, it's just a good practice, and I do this all over the state for this exact reason. And just, just for you guys to get an additional viewpoint, every property is unique and different in the way that it's situated, and so, it allows for councils such as yourself to, to look at each site individually, because as you, most, most of you know, you can't legislate around everything, and it gives you an additional opportunity to, to look at the site. We believe strongly here, obviously, it's outside of the 500 feet, and then the way that the restaurant is going to be situated, it's, it's facing the complete opposite way of the, the school. So, an approval of this certainly is not an indictment of any future prospects of the school, and it's our belief that it's going to operate, you know, without any interference with the school now or in the future. I stand by for questions. Thank you.
John, any questions for Keith?
None that I know of, but I will take a minute to personal pray, and say it's always a pleasure to see you, councillor and councilman.
Likewise, thank you.
Jim?
Nothing additional.
Rebecca?
Nothing new.
Scott?
Nothing new. I do have a couple concerns that were obviously brought up in the LPA. The amplified music part of it was brought up, they wanted to discuss, as well as the hours of operation. For me, being as close it is to the school, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seems a little too much for outside consumption. I mean, kids crossing the crosswalk there, watching someone have a beer on the outside corner, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense, but is the applicant open to, should this be approved, amending the conditions for the time of outside consumption and the amplified music that was brought up in the LPA?
Well, if I could, Mr. Mayor, what specifically with regards to the amplified music, are you talking about limiting it or also changing the times of that, or?
Yeah, I thought adjusting that would make more sense. Having amplified music with school in session, I think, could be disruptive, but...
Sure, I think, as, as with any time that, that I come before a board such as yourself, we want to make sure when we put these timeframes down, it's not necessarily indicative of, of an actual desire to do that, but it's easier to have that set forth, a wider, a wider array, just so that in, in the event that there was situations where you would need that. Certainly, if that is a sticking point of this council with regards to time, again, I would, I would request that, you know, if you have anything in particular as far as timing that you would suggest, we could, we could have that discussion, but yeah, certainly, we would be open to, I guess, seeing how the, the temperature was here with the rest of the council members with regards to that. I mean, amplified music, it's, it's, when you hear the, the word amplified music, you're thinking, you know, full throttle, but that really is just an indication of any sort of music that's put through any electronic device as a speaker or anything like that. So, it's not necessarily indicative of the fact that it's going to be blasting, but I certainly appreciate your concern. So, yeah, I mean, we could, we would be amenable to changing that. I mean, you also have provisions of your code that, that, you know, regulate hours of, of outdoor sounds and those sorts of things. So, typically, we would leave that portion of that, but this is the time where we would, we would limit that if that's the desire of council.
To me, it would make sense if it's approved to, to kind of coincide with everybody else's 11 o'clock. Most people open at 11 o'clock. Most people are serving breakfast, you know, they're not going to start serving usually till 11, at least the ones I've been in, maybe, maybe the Pancake House, I guess, I don't know, but I'm not going to die on a vine here over it, but I think it would make more sense to me to, to address those two issues that the LPA brought up, and that were brought up, I believe, in the past when this came through the first time. And obviously, parking is, as we're seeing, when, when you don't have significant parking, it overflows into people's driveways and into places that it shouldn't be, and, and it creates a problem that we know is going to be a problem. And I, I haven't seen yet anything from the applicants since the last hearing, when it was approved, that's going to address that.
Yeah, I can't, I certainly can't speak to parking, that was obviously contemplated under the original CPD. But yeah, if, if, if it's the desire of council that 11 o'clock for the, for the amplification and the consumption, is that your desire, Mr. Mayor?
I think just to keep it consistent, that would make sense to me, but I'll defer to my fellow councillors to see if that's something that they think is important. To me, 8:00 a.m. just seems a little early for being that close to the school.
Understood, thank you.
John, how do you feel about?
You know, I, I don't have any real feelings on it, to be honest with you.
Jim?
I'd be interested in your business model, just a little bit more sort of illustration of your business model. Are you, you're not talking about live music up there, are you? You're talking about just, this is piped in music, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's, yeah, that's what I was trying to get at with the amplification. I mean, it really could just be, you know, music that's held lower than a conversational level, just as an ambiance type thing. It's not necessarily a, like a club type setup.
But there is no intention to have live music?
That's not my understanding, certainly during those hours.
Okay.
And I certainly get the amplification part of it, you know, speaker, I know we went through this with the, the food park.
Mm-hmm.
As a food truck park thing. I, I totally understand amplified music can be a speaker, just like you're hearing now.
Sure.
Technically, is an amplified speaker, but I think it's more of the, the live band type thing that can get very loud, especially with a school in operation that close.
I guess I'd ask councillor, if, if you, if there are no plans in your business plan to have live music, could, could that address the, or would that address the mayor's concern? I mean, if you're...
Well, I wasn't aware that, that it was with the live music, but, I mean, I'm not in a position now, having, you know, to speak on behalf of the applicant with regards to that particular plan. If it was a concern, we could limit that, that time. But again, I, I hope that you don't take my reluctance to, to dive into that as some sort of diversion, that there's going to be this concert hall.
But I could see if you're having a wedding reception or a special event or something.
Well, and that's, and that's the problem that I kind of spoke to you previously, is that it's easier to have that open ended rather than, to an extent, than, you know, try to contemplate around the particular instances where you would have that. But again, we, we are, we would defer to, to your discretion if you wanted to maybe make the live portion limited to that, or even the amplification, or all music whatsoever to 11:00 a.m., if that, that can... But again, then it goes to, now that we've kind of evolved to the live music portion, well, are we going to have concerts in, on the street? Again, I would remind you that it's a 690-foot outdoor patio with, that really is the subject of this conversation. I mean, the rooftop is, is more like, more or less a lounge for the hotel guests, where they can order food from the, from the restaurant and have it brought up there. It's not an open air bar that's, you know, open to the public, where you're going to have, you know, routine, you know, live music, if that...
Yeah, I certainly don't want to pin them down to having to come in and ask for a special event permit every time they want music, but maybe if we did something about no live music during the normal business hours of the school? So, if it's outside the school's business hours, then you can have, you could have live music.
Could we even further limit that to, you know, when, when the school isn't, does hopefully come back into session? Certainly, obviously, it's not in...
Yeah, I think, to keep it clean and simple, if, if the school's in session, you can't have live music.
So, that it would be prospective, and we could work around it here, then?
Yeah, I mean...
I, I don't imagine that there would be any reluctance to that on behalf of the applicant, certainly if that was what, what gets it over the finish line. Again, there's no desire, from my understanding of the project, that it's going to be a live music venue, so to speak, but to councillor Adherold's point, you know, I don't want to get in a situation where someone sticks some because we said here no live music, and they have a special circumstance that, that they might bring something in.
Fort Myers Beach is always changing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware, yes, sir.
So, I, I would be, I, I mean, I think that would be a condition I would be comfortable with being in there, should it be approved, to, to not allow live music during school, during normal school business hours. And I would like to see the 11 to 10 versus the 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
For the consumption, you mean?
For the outside consumption. Those would be my two suggestions that I'd like to see into it.
I, I agree with the school portion of it, but if you've, if you have hotel guests, I, I think upstairs is fine, by the pool area.
Yeah, I mean, it gets back to policing it, too.
It gets dicey.
How are you going to, how are you going to police it? So, either way, you know, it's, I just think it's...
If, if a hotel guest is on vacation, they want to have a cocktail in the morning up, they can't get away till 11 o'clock.
If, if I'm a parent taking my kid to school, I don't know that I want someone stumbling on the sidewalk. Well, this would include the downstairs as well, is what he's asking for, if I'm not mistaken. Outside is outside, right?
There's two different portions. I mean, if you wanted to further, you know, restrict that, for lack of a better term, but then, then, you know, the reality of enforcement and, and those sorts of things. I mean, that's up to you guys. I certainly know more than most that that, that's the most difficult part of all these. You can have as many great ideas as you want, but if you don't have the enforcement capabilities, then what is it for? Certainly, we would be expected to police ourselves, the applicant, but just speaking openly, that's, that, that's always a concern. But yeah, you know, to councillor Vice Mayor Safford's point, yeah, I mean, it, it becomes problematic and certainly because on, as it currently exists, consumption would be allowed indoors during the, during these hours. The request here is for outdoors. So, you know, further complicating things, I guess, to, to, for the, for the owner and the applicant is, you can kind of have a drink in here, and it's not going to be a, a, something that they're going to be selling. But if someone wanted to have a Bloody Mary or whatever with breakfast, you keep it inside, but you can't have it outside, sort of deal. And then you got people standing at the door. So, 100% respect your position, Mr. Mayor, just also being realistic to the complexities of, of enforcing it. But if it's a point, I mean, we would, we would certainly...
I'm throwing it out there, so we'll see what the, my fellow councillors feel about it, but...
Sure. No, I appreciate the discussion.
I do have another question, actually. It is for my fellow councillors. If I remember correctly, and I may not, did not the superintendent of schools in Lee County send someone at, when we were looking at the original agreement, and they were concerned about alcohol even indoors? Am I...
I don't know if it was the late, the latest one for the building that you see now. I think it was the one prior to that, if memory serves me correctly.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're not, you know...
That was a completely different proposal.
Okay.
And then we did follow up with the school board, and it wasn't an official school board position. It was someone from this, the district administrative office who apparently opined, but it was for a different proposal.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure we didn't shoot ourselves in the foot trying to get a school.
I think, as memory serves.
That's my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's my recollection. It was the, the original proposal before the, the one that you see, the amended proposal in front of us. There's been a few for this property.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for, for Keith? We're going to open up to public comment. We'll come back and discuss. If we need to have you back up, we certainly will.
Yep. Standby. Thank you.
All right, public comment. Is there anyone in public comments that likes Pete? Phil?
Bill Veach for the record. And I remember the, you know, this, this property's been through a parade of different, you know, items where it's come in front of council. They started out just being a collection of residential properties. Then they were a bed and breakfast. Then they came with a cottages concept. That's when the school board came, just because they were serving alcohol on the property. And the school board, the representative had some objection. And then after the, after the hurricane, they came with this bigger commercial property. There's a couple of things that give me, would give me concern about this. One is that, you know, even if technically maybe you're not, the, the area they're talking about is, is outside the 500-foot circle from the school, the property is almost a butt to the school. And the, 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 the school board did have some reservations surveying alcohol on that property at all. And even though you may be legally allowed to do it, what kind of signal are you sending? What kind of message are you sending to the school board about your dedication to the school? There's, I know that I hear a lot of words in support of the school. There's also, there's some tangible actions you can take to show the school board that you take the school seriously. The other point is about the noise, is that I know when I was on council, probably the number one thing you heard about were, were noise complaints. And especially if you, if things are vague, if you, if, if the agreement says that they can have amplified music, but they said their intent is not to, the agreement is what will rule. So, they can, they can have that music. And even if, even if you put limits on times and everything else, those are really hard to enforce. They're almost impossible to enforce unless it's totally egregious. So, I would give some serious reservations to this. Are they just saying, you know, you have deeds and you have words. And if you don't, if you don't make concrete deeds to support the school, the words ring a little hollow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to, is there any? Keith, do you have any rebuttal comments to that?
Thank you, Mayor, again, for the record. Keith Long, on behalf of the applicant. No, no, just again, my reiteration to the point that, that certainly I have a difference of opinion is with regards to the distance and the buffers, and particularly with the way that the site is situated in the outdoor patio, not even being visually within the distance of the school. It wouldn't be an indictment, in my opinion, obviously, to any future prospects of the school to approve the, the request as presented. Other than that, that will be all. Thank you.
All right. I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from town council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion? I would like to, to, to add before it would go to the second reading, the comments of, of limiting the hours from 11 to 10 and adding no outside live music during normal school business hours. But I will leave it to my fellow councillors to determine if that's important or not.
I'm, I'm all in favor of no music during school, school hours, but I, I really feel when you have a resort, limiting the alcohol till 11:00 AM is a little, little much.
Okay. Jim?
I would just throw out as a compromise, I like the language of no live music while the school is open. And, and I think as a compromise, I, I also agree with Scott's point of, of allowing the, the hotel to function for its guests on, on normal hours. I, I think the live music is a much more challenging aspect for the school than to have a, a very small venue open early in the morning. I'm not a big cocktailer at 8:00 in the morning, but if people are on vacation and they want to have a Bloody Mary or a screwdriver, you know, as long as everybody's behaving themselves, and we have certainly, we've got certain ordinances that, and, and laws that protect people and, and the, the neighbors. And so, I, I don't want to relitigate the Myerside project this morning. I know that's a temptation, but I, I do think that, that would be a good compromise.
Okay. Rebecca, anything to add?
I support your comments as well. No music during school hours, and I would also say 11:00 AM to 10:00 for consumption.
Okay. John?
Well, I prefer mimosas, but I, I would agree with, with councillor Adherold's compromise.
Okay. Did someone like to make a motion? Anyone?
I'll make a motion that we move ordinance 2522 to a second hearing with councilman Adherold's added amendment, or condition, I'm sorry.
Okay. Got a motion by Vice Mayor Safford?
And I'll second that. Just for clarification purposes, the, the language would be that the Myerside project would not be allowed to have live music while the school is open for business.
During school hours.
Well, I, I think, I think anytime the school is open, right? I mean, isn't that when that'd be best? Because that way, the summer, obviously, yeah. I'm sorry, so you, did you have a, did you have a different way of saying it?
I, I was under the assumption that while school's in session, there's no live music.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, very good.
So, we've got a motion and a second discussion. I guess, Keith, if you would, take back this discussion to your applicants and to see by the second reading if they can have a chance to take a look at it. If they're not listening already, maybe they are, to consider some of the discussion and see what they say when they come back at second reading. I think we need to clarify a few of the, the actual, when we say that school is in session, does that mean the school's in session for so many months out of the year you can't have it? Or does that mean when school is up, when, I would like to see more clarifying language for that. My intention was when the kids leave and the campus is empty, then you could have live music. Not, I think it could be misread, to Bill's point. You know, the devil's in the details. And if you just say, well, school's in session, well, one could argue that means from this month to this month, school is technically in session.
I've been told by the applicant, there's no live music. So, certainly, you know, move forward with the motion, but that's less of an issue than I was under the impression.
I'm comfortable with that language, Mr. Mayor. If it's, if it's, if, if the school is open, no live music.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
No.
All right. Got a motion by Vice Mayor Safford, seconded by councillor Adherold, to take this to a second reading on December 15th, 2025, at 9:00 AM. There's no further discussion. Councillor Safford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Safford? Councillor, councillor Adherold?
Aye.
Councillor King?
Aye.
Councillor Inc.?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. See you.
Thank you all. See you then.
All right. Next is, sorry, my computer went down. Let's just do this one. Next is the ordinance 25-19 DA 20250186 for 50 Old San Carlos. This is a quasi judicial item and is a first reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 25-19. If approved at first reading, a second reading of adopt, final adoption hearing will be scheduled for December 15th, 2025, at 9:00 AM, or at another time identified by town council. In ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving or denying a home rule development agreement for the property located at 50 Old San Carlos Boulevard, Fort Myers Beach, Florida, strap numbers 24-46-23-W3-00208.002A, owned by Carlos El Chavez as trustee for the Carlos El Chavez Trust, as authorized by section 2-100 of the Towns Land Development Code, and in compliance with the procedures for application and approval of development agreements with deviations set forth in resolution number 24-247, for the purpose of redevelopment of the property to allow a mixed-use development with commercial at the ground floor, at the ground, open ground level, and single-family resident above, providing for terms and conditions, including but not limited to the identification of the proposed use of the property, a finding of consistency with the town of Fort Myers Beach Comprehensive Plan, commitments and development obligations, deviations needed for development, providing for other clarifications as necessary, and providing for conflicts of law, severance, scrivener's errors, and severability, and providing for an effective date. If any town council member has had any ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity or the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of the site. Vice Mayor?
Gosh, I, I believe we had a meeting six months ago, briefly, with Mr. Van Ness, but nothing, nothing recent, nothing with regards to what we have presented here today.
Okay. Rebecca?
Yes, I received an email from Mr. Van Ness after I was... Certified, thank you, yes. But before today, so I did not respond to him, was not sure if it was appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Adherold?
I also received a, an email from the neighborhood group offering to answer any questions, if we had any, but we did not have any meeting or any, any contact.
Councillor King?
Same as councillor Adherold.
Yeah, I have the same as both councillor Adherold and councillor King. Email, but no communication. Jason Green has been qualified as an expert already by this town council, and based on his education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? We know you.
Patrick Van Ness, for the record, I've been qualified, but the rest of my team here, we've got Albert Ambrose, who's our architect, also qualified, Laura Taff from our firm, also who's been qualified. And we have an attorney making up the team, but my understanding is attorneys do not need to be qualified as experts.
Fair enough. And has the property owner, applicant, seen a copy of the agenda backup materials from Saff? Yes, they have. Go ahead, Jason.
Jason Green, Community Development. As you mentioned, it's a developer's agreement for 50 San Carlos Boulevard. The property is located in the downtown zoning district in the pedestrian commercial future land use category. It is approximately .03 acres. I guess it's around 1,119 square feet. The applicant has proposed having a multi-story building, obviously, the down, the below, upstairs be residential and below would be commercial use. The findings of the staff report conclude that is, would be consistent with the zoning and the future, or excuse me, the comprehensive plan. There are three deviations included in one of your exhibits for the property. And that includes minimum rear setbacks, deviation for the maximum FAR, and to go into 2.5, and deviation for building edge planting relief from that. One, a couple of the comments that came from the LPA, who voted 7-0 to recommend approval, was to look at providing some additional landscaping, but maybe potted plant type landscaping versus in-ground because of the, how tight the site is, and for the applicant to give some consideration of staging. How, how are they going to do staging? And what does that look like? I think you're going to have that question probably in most of your Times Square properties. How do they use the public right away? And what does the town, how involved is the town in that staging of construction? Do they lease? Do they rent? They, you know, use of that right away, that's surrounding them. So, that might be, go a long way in helping us decide that for future developments, too. This is, as I said, is an ordinance for the developer's agreement, and as I mentioned, findings, conclusions, that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
The only question I have is based on the first one we had. Is there any plans to have any signs? Does it make sense to address any of those now and not have to come back later, should you decide to add a sign? I didn't see anything in here about signs.
Right.
Maybe this is a question for you, for you later, but I just trying to make sure we don't have to waste a lot of time to come back later, should it be approved for a sign. Okay. Any questions for Jason? John?
None.
Jim?
Not at this time.
None.
Scott?
Just a comment. I'm, I'm excited that this, we're, we're going the development agreement route with this. This is what, you know, we...
The intent?
This was what the intent was, and to help these little guys get, get back in business. I, one question I do have, Jason, is if, if the wave wall is built, I know it's, I don't, not sure we should put the cart in front of the horse, but if you're able to activate the lower part, will they have to come back and get a DA amendment?
No. I think in this case, the, the discussion of that, the purpose of this was to, I think, for allow for that in the future, if, if allowed, right? You can't today by the rules, but if allowed, then yes.
But it's written like that, so we...
I believe so, yes. I think that was the intent, if the applicant agrees with it.
If you don't have to come back, is that correct? Okay, perfect.
Right. But it's a great question of major versus minor amendments to some of these things. So, that is definitely something we want to clarify moving forward in the code so that it's not a case-by-case or individually based. We can have a broader delineation of when that happens.
Okay.
It's a good point.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Yep.
Patrick?
Good morning. My name is Patrick Van Ness, certified planner with the neighborhood company. What my attorney was letting me know about is that I haven't officially been recognized as an expert, just to be overly cautious. What the attorney is saying is he'd like us to recognize all the...
I will make a motion to recognize Patrick and his team as an expert witness in this case.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Welcome aboard, expert.
Thank you. I've got a presentation. I will keep it brief, but it's a pleasure to be here today. And it's a pleasure because we get to help a small business owner on Fort Myers Beach, and we get to use the development agreement and why it was intended. It was really to help out the mom and pops and to have a process that was a, a little streamlined, not as complicated as a CPD, and to get the redevelopment moving forward. So, happy to be here. As mentioned, I'm joined by Carlos Chavez, who is the owner and applicant. We also have Albert Ambrose, our attorney, Laura Taff, planner with the neighborhood company, and Richard Aiken, who is the attorney for this project. So, as you know, the subject property is the former Kill Winds. And since Hurricane Ian, it has been in operation with a mobile vending ice cream trailer. And the intent is to move forward, redevelop the property. The applicant has heated the request from the town and from FEMA to please come forward, please address your mobile vending use, make it compliant, address all FEMA issues, address all Florida Billion Code issues, address all town issues. And that's what we're doing. We're taking that first step moving forward. So, what is proposed for this property? It's a three-level structure, mixed use in nature. Ground level would be the ice cream vending enclosed under the property. And when I say enclosed, let me clarify, that it would be covered, but at this time initially, it would not be enclosed. The idea is, and there was a question of, should there be a wave mitigation wall built? The way this is written would allow the applicant, if he chooses so, to enclose the downstairs and run that business as a more conventional ice cream shop. The second and third floor is for a one-bedroom, single-family residence, and that would be for the owner and his family. As your staff mentioned, very small property, about 1,100 square feet, located within the downtown zoning district, and the future land use category for this property is pedestrian commercial. We are here today asking for three deviations, and that's why we are going through this development agreement process in order to get these three small issues resolved, which will allow the project to move forward. The first one is to reduce the minimum rear setback that is 10 feet. The first one is to reduce the minimum rear setback that is 10 feet, allow a zero-foot setback. The second one is to increase the FAR currently in the downtown zoning district. The maximum FAR is 1.8. However, the pedestrian commercial future land use category allows for more FAR when you go through a zoning process like this, and we are asking for the 2.5, which is allowed per the comp plan. And last but not least, we are asking for, it was a deviation from the building edge plantings. It was discussed at the LPA. I think initially we'd requested no plantings, but I think the compromise, what was suggested, and we are 100% supportive of that, is to be able to use movable planters instead, so make it appealing, make it decorative, but having the ability to move those around if we need to get the trailer in and out. This is a, an area of the subject property, as you can see, smallest property in Times Square. The property is surrounded to the north and to the east by the Bella Mozzarella property. Just want to point out that Bella Mozzarella is partly owned by Carlos and family members, so the reduced setback in the rear is really affecting another property that they own. That's the, the only other property that would be affected by that. To the west, we have the Times Square Plaza, and to the south was the former Placa's Restaurant. These are renderings of the proposed building. As you can see, downstairs, open space for the vending, mobile vending trailer. Above that, the residence, the design is coastal in nature, and this has been completely designed, and if you want more detail, Albert can provide those, but with firewalls and everything prepared for accommodating future development around the property and making sure it fits in, and also that it's built properly to meet all fire ratings and all the code details.
Patrick, if I could, you touched on something that you may get to later in your presentation, but I thought this would be a good time to ask. It's more philosophical, and maybe Albert wants to opine on this as well, but, you know, as an early entrant into rebuilding Times Square, what you're proposing is, is, will impact the surrounding properties, and there has to be some kind of asymmetry or synergy between this particular property and the rest of the Times Square development. How do you do what, doing what you do and what Albert does, what he does, how do you, how do you make sure that, that this particular proposal will work well with a lot of things that are coming forward, and some of them haven't come forward yet? How do you, how do you, how do you work that as a planner and an architect, so as we look at the bigger Times Square puzzle?
Yeah. As you know, we have worked with the property owners for Times Square on conceptual plans. What we developed there was very coastal in nature, with a lot of architectural variations and balconies, a lot of coastal architecture with horizontal siding and a mix of facades. So we, we have a general idea of what the vision is from those neighbors moving forward. We also look at the code and the architectural requirements in the code, and what we've presented today is consistent with that broader vision. And also, we've had discussions with staff. I think initially, the, the design that was presented at the pre-application meeting was a lot more contemporary in nature. There was a request to make it more coastal, and that's what we've done, and I think with this design, it would tie in very easily with what's going to be coming forward from the other property owners.
Thank you.
Quickly going through the various floors and the general layouts, as you can see, those are the, the development footprint of the building, roughly 1,000 square feet, area for the mobile vending trailer, and then some seating around that. We see the stairs going up to the second floor, and under the stairs is where the garbage containers were being closed and rolled out with, with, on the pickup days. This is the second and third floor. Again, we've, we're asking for an increased FAR, but what I'd like you to understand is that even at 2.5, this only allows for a very modest residential unit. As you can see, second floor is kind of the living area, kitchen, living room, bathroom, and upstairs relegated to a one-bedroom master bedroom up there. So again, very modest home, and it's a small footprint, and they're trying to do the best they can with that very small footprint. This is the development agreement, the regulatory plan that goes with the ordinance. No need to really go into any kind of detail, but it does contain maximum FAR, square footages, that type of thing. This is a graphic that we discussed a little bit with the LPA. A lot of times, people do not understand what is meant by floor area ratio. This is a very good graphic explaining what is calculated in that FAR. Albert did a great job. So everything you see in, in that pink-purple color is the volume that we calculate, and we have a maximum FAR. We calculate all those areas, and we meet the maximum of 2.5. And as, as mentioned, and we've discussed that in other projects, I'd like to point out that even if the downstairs is open, we still have to calculate that as part of our FAR. This is an elevation of the building, and it was provided in the application packet to demonstrate that we meet height requirements. We provided both the zone height and the overall height of the building, and we meet those requirements. Last but not least, like to reiterate that we went to the LPA, we got unanimous recommendation of approval at the LPA, staff has recommended approval. When we were at the LPA, some little verbiage changes were discussed for that development agreement. Our attorney went, I think, back and forth once or twice with Nancy to agree on that language. We were all in agreement. However, the revised language did not make it in your packet. I've got copies for everybody here. Happy to hand those out, and our attorney can walk you through those changes.
So I want to emphasize that Patrick is correct. I agree with his representation that was made, just so you know that there was a little bit of back and forth internally, trying to get this and meeting the agenda deadlines, the importance of getting it to you at today's meeting. So I think if Mr. Aiken can just run through those for you, I don't recall having any objections to them.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Council members, through your record, Richard Aiken, here on behalf of the applicant. So just to run briefly through the red line changes in the development agreement. If you look on page two, you'll see the first one. It's a square footage change because there was a typographical error, so it was from 2787 to 2797. It's just to reflect the accurate square footage. Can you see it?
It doesn't actually show on here, but...
That was already approved last time. Okay. That was approved last time. Got it. Okay.
So I think it starts on page three, then?
Yeah, so we're under seven, which is landscape. So the LPA asked us to add language requiring that the developer will provide decorative plants to be located in movable planters slash plots at the, pots at the time of develop, our building permit. So we made that language change. I don't know if there are any questions about it, if you have to talk about it further. Next change is on page five of 16, which is in part of, it's in the part of paragraph five, the very last part there. So it provides that in the event of newer additional facilities are needed to serve the project, the developer will bear its proportionate share of the cost of such facilities to be constructed, consistent with the dual rational nexus test. And we deleted some language there and just sort of rearranged it. So the idea is, we took out the burden of, and we just put in its proportionate share. Nancy had the dual rational nexus test, which that's basically what it provides, we just wanted to clarify it. So again, the owner of the property here has no problem in the event a wave mitigation wall, a centralized drainage plan, something like that happens, he has no problem paying his proportionate share. Just wanted to reiterate that it would be the proportionate share. What I did here on the, the second part where we took out some language was simply, there's this discussion about, to provide a schedule to the town to assure that the public facilities and services will be available concurrent with the impact of the development. I don't think we have any idea what it might be, like theoretically, what might need to be there. The idea is that the owner wants to go ahead and move forward, so in paragraph seven, there's a requirement that we obtain the building permit and all the other permitting. So if there's anything that has to be done in order to permit it, they're going to have to do it before they get that permit. The idea is, this language just seemed like it could possibly be the basis for a catch or a holdup at some time in the near future, and didn't seem necessary in light of the required permitting that's in paragraph seven. So that's how we got there. In paragraph seven, you'll see that there's the underlying language, governmental permits that may be needed. Only reason we wanted to add that is, I think there, there are some permits that I don't believe will be necessary for this project, but there may be exemptions from those permits from the permitting entities, so we just clarified that. And we also added in, below in paragraph seven to say, in the event a permit listed above is not required by the authority having jurisdiction to issue the permit, the developer will not be required to obtain the permit. Just pretty straightforward. Next, we're on to paragraph 12. We, originally, I think we had in our draft of the development agreement, the option of the developer to terminate it before, if, if no work ever begins, if, in this case, the owner never gets anything going, decides he wants to terminate the development agreement, and it would of course revert back to the existing zoning, what's allowed today, he would do that. The question that you would all ask is, well, why might he want to do that? Probably the only realistic reason I could think is if there's some cohesive centralized development plan that comes in for those buildings down there in Times Square. That would mean that he could just terminate it, go with that cohesive plan, which I'm sure would probably be a PD coming before you anyway, and wouldn't require him to come back through a process to terminate the development agreement. But it does very specifically provide that, notwithstanding the foregoing, in the event of termination, developer will not leave any improvements in an unsafe condition. That's just there to catch and make sure that we've covered our bases. So...
This is supposed to have the address.
Nancy, I believe that was all I had, other than, there was one other additional email I'd sent you where there was just language in here clarifying that everything had been reviewed and was consistent, and found to be consistent by the town with the Comprehensive Plan. Think that inadvertently got taken out, so we'd like to add that back in, which is probably both for best, or best for both parties. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, and I would just add, in paragraph 13, we'll put some addresses in there for the respective parties who are to receive notices, and I think that that is all. I apologize for the mix-up.
No, not at all.
The only thing I want to bring back up again is the signage thing. I know number four in here is basically saying, any signage, you got to come back in. To me, that, why wouldn't you want to address what you would potentially think you'd need now, instead of having to bear the cost and the time to go back through this again?
We've looked at the signage issue. Currently, the code allows for a 32-square-foot sign. That's, that's good with the applicant, and he's discussed it with the, the designer, with Albert, and they can make the 32-square-feet work.
Any questions, Scott, for, is there, at the end of your presentation?
Last thing, in my professional planning opinion, this is consistent with the comp plan and with the Land Development Code, and we are happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Scott, questions?
Not at this time.
Rebecca?
None.
Jim?
Just briefly, Patrick, curious if you, if you could share the timeline for construction, and have, is someone in the note, do you have any knowledge that you could share as to what the plans are for the Placa?
I, I will let Carlos address the details, but my understanding is Carlos wants to move forward as soon as possible. He's going to have to go to the, through the development order process next, get his permits. Also, he is looking at different construction methods. Obviously, any construction on this island is very expensive, especially in a V-zone, especially in Times Square, so he's working very hard with Albert to look at how this could be constructed and trying to do it as quickly and as efficiently as possible.
I thought you definitely avoided my other question. Have you heard any rumors as to what's going to go next door at the Placa?
Nope. I do not know.
That's fair enough. That's fair enough. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
John?
Nothing.
Just a quick question, Patrick. Have you guys given thought into, obviously, the construction's going to take time, and it's going to take space, and have you worked with the town, or has the town got anything in place to, we're obviously going to have to shut some of that Times Square down to be able to allow construction to happen. It's going to have to go into the public right-of-way, I'm assuming, to fence it off to do construction. Have those conversations been had yet as to how you're going to do that, staging, things like that? You don't necessarily have to answer now, but maybe before a second reading.
No, we, we have not had those discussions yet. I know that's something that Albert has given thought to, and he's going to try to find best solutions possible. Obviously, space is limited, so timing's going to be important, and also might be some agreements with neighbors as to where materials can be staged.
Yeah, I'd like to see that discussion, as I've been thinking about these projects, you know, going forward. One of the things I'd like to see us do in the future is, you know, conditions of approval is you have to maintain your site.
I don't know if you recall, but about seven years ago, eight years ago, we were having the same conversation. As the infill lots were filling up, nobody was able to use a lot next door anymore to stage construction, and that's usually how that was being handled on the residential side. I foresee that, again, becoming a problem as, obviously, we fill in back what was there, but especially on the commercial side, you're right. That's a conversation the town needs to have, what we're going to do with Times Square especially, I think.
Okay. Albert?
Good morning, still. Albert Ambrose, Studio AD, just for the record. To kind of discuss that, it's basically going to have to be a community effort, honestly. As we are moving forward into the next phase, which is a site development permit, even though there's not much of a site as opposed to any other site that has a land around it and parking lots and landscaping, being in an urban area is a lot more challenging. What I mean by community working together is I would reach out to Frankie and ask for public works records of what's the infrastructural that's on their Times Square. One of the things are, these buildings are taller. I know at one point, I'm not think sure when, the Times Square utility upgrades were going to take place, so it's a whole chicken-and-the-egg kind of a conversation. I think we're all going to have to be transparent and open as far as who's going first. We are starting to review some of those infrastructural diagrams. I will say, in older parts of towns, older parts of areas, older water pipes will lead to restrictions to taller buildings that are bigger. We have fire flow, we're conversing with Jennifer Campbell with the City, Town of Fort Myers Beach Fire Department already. When we first started to design this project, and we've talked about firewalls and all that nature, but authority having jurisdiction is going to have fire sprinklers regardless of any building, whatever size it is in Times Square. And that makes sense to me, my industry, my years of experience, we're dealing with an urban situation, and the stairwell not drivable into there, and you have pedestrians, that's going to be authority have a jurisdiction requiring fire sprinklers because of the time and accessibility again there. With that comes FDC, Fire Department connections, water lines, so the question is, if Times Square was already updated, it would be better. If it's not, we're going to have to work in cohesiveness to worry about these things.
Well, yeah, you're bringing up another point, but that wasn't the point I was trying to make, but I totally understand what you're saying, and I think staff gets what you're saying, and you'll have to work together. I'm talking about what you can't see above the ground. My guess is these are probably going to run around the same time as construction of the pier happening, and maybe another project. So I'm talking about actual construction, staging, skid loaders, scaffolding, all those kind of things.
Definitely as well, too. I think Carlos has other ideas, a lot of different options we have from even a modular standpoint building there. It's just we have to work those details out in construction. Obviously, yes, a traditional build takes a lot more resources, as we saw in beach bar and construction, in any urban area, you sprawl out, you know, Salty Crab's having that logistical coordination right now. It does make things challenging. I think there's always a solution to all these things, just like I said, working together with everybody, in fact. It'll be obviously interesting if what happens next around Placa happens with timing, it's a whole working together, honestly, because our foundation system needs to be designed to be able to handle a building next door being built as zero lot line with a brand-new foundation system, so that their system going in doesn't affect our system. Same thing with, I was saying, the underground system, that we know where those are going, so we can design around them. If they're not ready to go in yet, we can work with the town to put those in place. That all leads back to logistical and a site, what needs to take place, and when's the best time to start construction. So while we were walking through contractors, we have these, we've had these logistical construction meetings and discussions so far.
Yeah, if memory serves me right, I think back, we had some sort of brief plans. I don't know if they were permit-ready plans for the infrastructure in Times Square before the storm hit, but I don't know if they were permit-ready.
There was waterline... There was water line replacement and paver replacement.
And that was going to show where each building at the time could tie in to the stormwater.
Then you had the wave mitigation wall in the future. Since there isn't a design yet, what does that do to the pedestrian walking level, and how does that interact with the entry to the actual businesses that's on grounds? Even if they're not enclosed just yet, again, it's a lot of master plan going on. So whoever goes in there first is kind of setting up the benchmark for everyone to follow, so you want to make sure that they're setting it up correctly, so not just helps them, but works well the rest of the town, Times Square.
Sounds like you just put some pressure on yourself.
Not enough pressure, you know?
All right, thanks, Albert. Any other questions? All right, public comment? Does anyone like to speak in public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'm assuming you have no rebuttal questions? I'll now close the public hearing, request a discussion or a motion from Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Is there a motion? I will move to approve ordinance 25-19DA202250186, 50 Old San Carlos, to move to the second reading on December 15th at 9:00 a.m., 2025.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Allers, seconded by Vice Mayor Safford. Any further discussion? I'm an aye, Scott?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. See you next month. All right, next is item D. This is a resolution, this is Resolution 25-320, SEZ202502281741, Estero Boulevard, The Goods. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions or denying special exception, SEZ20250228, to allow consumption on premises, COP, and an outdoor patio at third floor within 500 feet of dwelling units for the property located at 1741 Estero Boulevard, generally identified as strap number 19-46-24-W4-0080B.0010, and providing for an effective date. Jason?
Jason Green, Community Development. Yes, similar to some of the others you've had today, it's a special exception for...
Yeah, do I need to do ex parte on this?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, thanks. All right, if any Town Council member has had any ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of the site. Scott?
I've had multiple conversations with Graham, the owner, and I've received several emails this week totaling in favor of the proposal.
Rebecca?
None.
Jim?
I have received a number of emails in support of the proposal.
John?
Likewise.
I have also received the same emails. Jason Green has been qualified as an expert witness already by the Town Council, based on his education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? Kara, come on up.
Kara Stewart. I have been sworn in as a before. Do I need to do it again?
I believe you were sworn in today, but you have been qualified. I think everyone knows Kara as an expert in land use planning in the town of Fort Myers Beach.
Correct.
Yes, you're good.
Okay.
Nancy says you're fine, we're good. All right, Jason?
Yes, the application is before use simply for the outdoor patio area for consumption on premise in the outdoor area. In the last year, the applicant has changed the uses internally, and I believe the story that we're talking about, the floor is going to be a beachside arcade and pizza, so a restaurant, which are allowed to have the consumption on premise inside. It's just the outdoor patio area that's servicing that floor. It requires the additional consumption on premise and special exception. The LPA reviewed it and voted four to one, recommended approval, and there was a couple modifications to the conditions, including eliminating the word amplification in condition three, replacing a condition four with the hours of operation from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Staff report has identified the findings and found that recommend approval with conditions because it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. There are other variances, other things that had gone along with this property, and those were approved by the LPA related to parking. That was simply a mathematical exercise, because the change in use required the additional parking on paper. They already have been approved on their site plan for a certain number of parking spaces, and so it was just basically doing the math on the variance to be consistent with what they're going to provide on site. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
John, any questions for Jason?
Nothing.
Jim?
No.
Rebecca?
None.
Scott?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Kara?
Good morning. I'm here, Kara Stewart, on behalf of the owner's Belcher Properties. As staff has commented, we are here asking for outdoor consumption on a patio, which is on the third floor. The access to this patio is by a single door, double door, actually, I think a six-foot opening. The intention is to allow patrons that are coming to the facility to enjoy some family games, it's a family arcade, have a bite to eat, and enjoy a glass of wine or a glass of beer out on the patio. We are in the pedestrian commercial land use category, which is primarily a commercial category, although we do abut residential neighborhoods in the rear. The facility is located so that this patio is to Estero Boulevard, providing for that structure to provide buffer to the neighbors in the rear. At this time, staff has recommended the conditions that we adjusted at LPA. We are in favor of them, and we have no objection to them, which is limiting our hours and any music to be entertained with, I guess I should say. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Scott, any questions for Kara?
Not at this time.
Rebecca?
None.
Jim?
Kara, this may be premature, but there's a lot of excitement about this particular proposal, particularly people with families and people looking for things to do. Can you just give a little bit more color as to what will go on? People get the hardware store, they have a wonderful hardware store, but in the family arcade and in this area above, can you just give a little more color so people know what to expect?
Sure. The third floor, the Belcher family, as it says, is a family. So as things were moving along on the beach, and more and more residential units were being approved, the original application was for a hotel, which we've changed now to a family entertainment center, which will be games for children of all ages. This is not in any way, shape, or form, these gambling arcades, this is strictly a family fun entertainment center. We are regulated by statute as well as DBPR, as well as the beach. So it will really be, the intention is, is that we're creating a place where, at the end of the day, hey, Grandma, where are we going to go do now? Well, we're going to go play some arcade games. We're going to go do something else other than be on the beach. It is, the intention is to serve some food, only going for a two COP, which is beer and wine only, so we're not anticipating that other bar atmosphere. We are regulated by, we must maintain, I should say, a 51% food to 49% alcohol ratio. We're really looking forward to it. It's kind of exciting, because it will be offering something new to the beach that we have not had before in that element of a family fun center.
Very good, thank you. John?
None.
I did not either, thanks, Kara. Public comment? Anyone like to speak in public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. I assume you have nothing else you'd like to...
I have nothing else.
Okay. Then we'll now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Is there a motion or discussion? I will move to approve Resolution 25-320, SEZ20250281741, Estero Boulevard, The Goods, to move to the second reading on December, no, this is a resolution. I lied, I just approved. I'm in, I've just...
We're just done today.
We're good, yes. So I'm making motion to approve, how about that?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mayor Allers, seconded by Councilmember Safford. Yes. I will amend my motion to reflect the conditions as stated.
As provided, yes, in the resolution.
As provided in the staff report.
I will amend my second accordingly.
All right, and I will amend my second to being Councilmember Adherhold. Any further discussion? I'm an aye. Councilmember Haverd?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Link?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adherhold?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next is item E. This is ordinance 25-24, Impact Fee Study in Land Development Code, text amendment to Article Four, Impact Fees. This is a legislative agenda item, is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 25-24. This is an ordinance of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, adapting an impact fee study dated August 25th, 2025, and prepared by Access Infrastructure and DP Guthrie LLC, amending Article Four entitled Impact Fees in Chapter Two, entitled Administration of the Town of Fort Myers Beach Codex Ordinance is to one, incorporate updated information contained in the referenced Impact Fee Study; two, reduce the number of impact fee categories and specific uses; three, change the method of calculation of fees for single-family homes from per dwelling to square footage range to reflect the typical impact of larger homes; four, reduce the amount of fees based on updated population and project expectations; and five, providing for an update every four years payable from collected impact fees, providing for other clarifications as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, severability, and providing for an effective date. Jason?
Jason Green, Community Development, Access Infrastructure. Yeah, so before you, obviously, is the proposed impact fee study to, it reflects essentially the culmination of evaluating the town's infrastructure and future needs related to mobility and parks and recreation. And as you mentioned, four to five years, we have to update that study to remain consistent and compliant with state law, and that'll offer you also opportunities to evaluate future infrastructure projects. It matches up pretty well with a five-year CIP cycle that you normally would do on an annual basis. So I know we have a new member that may have some more questions, wasn't here for the first one, but if you have any questions about the impact fee, I'd be happy to answer them. And we believe it'll be easier to implement and administer, and cheaper to administer in calculating the fees.
Vice Mayor Safford, questions for Jason?
Nothing's changed since the first reading, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
I do, Jason.
Yes, ma'am.
So I hope I'm not annoying with my questions, some of it may be learning curve. I'm looking at Section 2-311, refund of fees paid, and it was on page 228 in our packet, and it says that, you know, we would refund the fee payer at a rate of 6% per annum. Boy, do I wish I could get 6%. I wonder if that is marked in stone, or it can be somewhat flexible to, you know, some other economic factor, just so we're not paying more than we're able to earn on our money.
Sure, yeah, I think that's a fair question. It could, we could amend that to be basically interest earned, not necessarily a set percentage? Is that what you were referring to?
Or even a point over prime or something, you know? If we're administering it, we can make a few bucks, or just so it doesn't cost us money.
Right, so on the impact fees, it used to be a percentage of a fee that we charge, and now it's a dollar amount, but you collect that coming in going, essentially. But to your point, so that we don't get to keep it all, but we get a fee that reflects the cost of doing the administration of it.
Doing the work.
Correct. And that's what's also, that is baked into the fee overall. If you see that, there's an administrative fee component that makes up the total fee for each of those items, but we would collect that fee coming in going.
Right, and this is just on the interest?
Yeah, so I think that, to your point, that can be modified here for the final ordinance, yes.
Thank you, Jason, that's it.
Jim?
I think it was pretty vetted the first reading, so I'm comfortable, thank you.
Okay.
John?
Nothing additional.
I have nothing additionally, other than what you brought up, that was a good catch. Any further discussion? Oh, public comment? Would anyone like to speak in public comment for the impact fees?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from the Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion or motion? I will move to approve ordinance 25-24, Impact Fee in Land Development Code, text amendment to Article Four, Impact Fees.
I'll second.
With the amendment?
With the proposed amendment.
With the proposed amendment, yes.
Motion by Mayor Allers, seconded by Councilmember Link. Any further discussion? I'm an aye. Rebecca?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. All right, item F, we rescheduled, which brings us to item G. This is a legislative agenda item. This is ordinance 25-27, Certified Recovery Residences. This is legislative agenda item, is the first reading of public hearing of proposed ordinance 25-27. If adopted at first reading, a second reading and final adoption hearing will be scheduled on December 1st, 2025, at 9:00 a.m., or at another time identified by Town Council. This is an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, one, establishing procedures for the review and approval of applications for reasonable accommodations needed to operate certified recovery residences from existing land use regulations in new Section 34-204, in Division Four, Applications and Procedures of Article Two, Zoning Districts and Standards and Nonconformities of Chapter 34, as mandated by Section 397.48715A, Florida statutes; and two, amending Section 34-232, Required Hearings or Deviation Five, Public Hearings and Review of Article Two, Zoning Procedures of Chapter 34, Zoning Districts, Design Standards and Nonconformities, to require only one public hearing before the local planning agency, LPA, for approval of applications for reasonable accommodations to operate a certified recovery residence as provided in Section 34-204. If the decision by eligible members of the LPA is unanimous, and the town clerk does not receive a request from an additional public hearing before the Town Council from anyone, including town staff, within 10 days after the LPA decision, providing for codification, severability, scrivener's errors, conflicts of law, and an effective date. Jason?
Yes, Jason Green, Community Development. It's a text amendment to the land development code, and you write all that great stuff to allow for a process for reasonable accommodations, which is mandated by state law now. I believe we have till January 1, right, Nancy? Or, yeah, January 1 to adopt these regulations to provide for those. And it follows a streamlined process that you've already adopted for other similar variances of our applications. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Scott, questions?
Not at this time.
Rebecca?
Yes, I do. Jason, and perhaps maybe Will can speak to this. Since this process is going to change, I'm wondering if this is something we can communicate out to the town, just so they know they're, they may be used at two LPA meetings, and now there's going to be one. It's for the good of them, but we want to make them aware, so if we can communicate this.
We certainly will.
Thank you, I think that's a great thing, thanks.
Yes?
That's it.
Jim?
No.
John?
It's pretty much cut and dried with mandate, so I have no further questions.
All right, public comment? Anyone like to speak in public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And now, I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion or motion? Discussion or motion? I will make a motion to approve ordinance 25-27, certified recovery residence, going to the second reading on December 15th at 9:00 a.m.
I'll second.
All right, got a motion by Mayor Allen, seconded by Councilmember Adherholdt. Any further discussion? I'm an aye. Councilman Haverhill?
Aye.
Councilman King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Safford?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is our administrative agenda. Does anyone need to take a comfort break before we get into this? Or we want to just keep power through?
Please.
Yeah? All right, we'll take a 10-minute break, we'll come back about 12 o'clock.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting.
Hold on, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. We got one item that I missed that we have to walk on the FPL, so we'll do that first. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Statement of Work with FPL Energy Services Inc., amending Section 1 and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to defer to Mr. Jeff Howgie, Community Services Director, for details.
We are, good afternoon already, so that's good. So Jeff Howgie, Community Services Director, Town of Fort Myers Beach. This one is just a document that FPNL needs us to approve. You all know the lighting project is happening right now. We did have to switch over some poles to the other side of the street or move locations, which aren't, weren't part of the approved plans. So they just need these official locations to be approved by you so we can do the as-built after. So it's just a matter of the ones that we've either had to move from residence, front of residence houses, or moved for whatever reason. There's only a few of them that we had gotten asked to do that. So it just needs to go on the record as you approving those locations to go forward. So no, no money attached to this at all. It's just the locations of the actual poles.
All right. John, any questions for Jeff?
None.
Jim?
None.
Rebecca?
None.
Scott?
None.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to, there's no resolution number with it? No, for the walk-on? The FPL?
Twenty-five dash three-two-six.
What's this one? It's three-hundred.
There it is, here.
Oh, there it is at the bottom, yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-six, Amendment 1 to FPL's scope of work.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor, seconded by Vice Mayor Safford. Any further discussion? I'm an eye. Scott?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Next is Resolution twenty-five dash three-hundred, Charter Review Commission Unexcused Absences. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, amending and restarting, restating Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-three-hundred to include guidance regarding unexpected absences of any individual serving on the Town of Fort Myers Beach Charter Review Commission and providing an effective date. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, it's actually unexcused.
Unexcused, did I say excused? Unexcused, thank you.
So basically, as, just to bring you up to speed, Rebecca, we're going through the charter review right now. And, you know, that's gonna be voted on hopefully in the next election cycle. But we go through a process, and as we uncover things that don't necessarily need to be voted on, we find things like how we deal with excused absences, how we, you know, we come up with different, different things that can be not in the charter, but we can, I bring it to council, and we can, you know, either a resolution or what have you. So it's gonna be, every month, we meet on the first Tuesday of every month. So our first meeting went well, and we didn't really have a process to, we've got five people on the board and two alternates, so we needed to codify how, how the alternates work. Now, after our last meeting, we're like, well, how are we gonna deal with unexcused absences? So it's really bringing everything in line with, with the other, with Murph and with LPA and all the other advisory committees. So it's nothing really spectacular, it's just bringing, it's just codifying how we work with those other committees or how their, how their rules are.
Perfect. Can I add a little bit?
Yes.
So this particular resolution is amending and restating twenty-five dash three-hundred. So the Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-eight includes all the information from the prior resolution with some underlining as to what is now different. And this way, we have it all in one document as opposed to having a Resolution three-hundred and then a separate resolution that amends it. So it brings it, it brings it all together. The operative language is on page four-twenty-two of your packet, and it basically says, "In the event an appointed CRC," which would be Charter Review Committee, or Commission, "member or appointed alternate member has two unexcused absences from a scheduled CRC meeting as verified by the town clerk's attendance records, the individual shall be subject to removal from the CRC upon notice to the Town Council." So the Town Council has the authority to appoint, and so the Town Council would have the authority to remove. It is not an automatic removal. If the clerk says, well, they have two unexcused absences, it would actually come before you. That gives them the opportunity to also come before you and explain why they were unable to meet the meeting. Bear in mind that this particular committee is somewhat temporary and short-term. They have to have their work completed, I believe, by April. So if you do miss two, if you do have two unexcused absences, it really puts that commission at a disadvantage by not having the interaction and input from that individual.
Very good. Any questions for Scott? Rebecca?
Nope.
Jim?
None.
John?
Nothing.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-eight?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Safford, seconded by Councilor Adherold. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Adherold, Safford? It's gonna take a while.
Tip jar over here.
Yeah.
Aye.
The Councilmember?
Aye.
Adherold. Councilor King?
Aye.
Councilor Link?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. It's gonna take a little getting used to. Next is Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-one, RFQ dash twenty-four dash zero-six dash AD, Miscellaneous Ongoing Professional Services, Additional Five Firms. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving five individual professional service agreement with the following firms, which were negotiated by town staff as directed by Town Council on August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, in response to RFQ dash twenty-four dash zero-six dash AD entitled Ongoing Miscellaneous Professional Services. One, Blot Engineering, Inc. Two, Forefront Architects and Engineering LLC. Three, Professional Services Industries, Inc. Four, RG Architects, P.A. Five, RWA Engineering, authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement with each of the top-ranked firms for each category of work within the request for qualifications in which were successfully negotiated and providing for an effective date. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. More great work by the staff as they continue to work through our rolodex of professional service contracts to negotiate good contracts for the town. This, we are now at twenty-three approved, if the council votes so today for these four, twenty-three out of thirty-two making good progress.
Very good. Scott, any questions for Will?
No.
Rebecca?
Will, I have one question. Is there a form somewhere where I might see a matrix on how they are evaluated by your staff? Is there anything that says price has to be weighted as the highest, and they can go from there? Just kind of the guidelines.
We can provide, Councilor Link, we can provide you with the staffing or the, the method and the score sheets and stuff that our boards use.
Perfect, just generically. Thank you.
Jim?
None.
John?
Nothing.
I have nothing as well. There's no further discussion. Is there a motion for Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-one, RFQ twenty-four zero-six AD for Ongoing Professional Services?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-one.
Got a motion by Councilor Adherold.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember Link. Any further discussion? Councilor Adherold?
Aye.
Councilor Link?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Safford?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Next is Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-five, Fiscal Year End Budget Adjustment and Ratification of four-hundred-and-three dollars NTE for Scully's Aluminum Boat. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Lee County, Florida, approving a year-end budget adjustment for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, ratifying a four-hundred-and-three dollar increase in the not-to-exceed amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-eight dollars to one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars for the purchase of an aluminum boat for Scully, from Scully's Aluminum Boats, Inc., and providing for an effective date. Joe? Or Will?
Before Joe starts, just, yeah, if approved by, this, a modest increase we need for the purchase of the boat, but if approved today, also Curtis and a member of his team are gonna be heading out to pick up the boat, you know, tomorrow, and bring it back to us, so we're gonna-
Very good.
-add, add to our fleet.
Joe?
Okay, good afternoon, Joe Onzick, Finance Director. This is really a housekeeping item. As, as the, there was an original, well, let me go back to the beginning, so last November two thousand and twenty-four, the town had collected an unbudgeted code enforcement lien of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. Later in the year, it was determined that the purchase of a new aluminum boat in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars to service the mooring field maritime and code enforcement operations was in the best interest of the town, and that it was to be funded out of that unbudgeted code enforcement lien revenue. The actual purchase of the boat was authorized by the Town Council in June with Resolution twenty-five dash ninety-one, and it was for a not-to-exceed amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-eight dollars. After that was authorized, there was an additional expenditure of four-hundred-and-three dollars that was deemed necessary to fully equip the boat. So basically, then, this resolution is just going back to ratify that change in price, that increase of four-hundred-and-three dollars. So it's bringing the total amount from one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-eight dollars to one-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars, one-hundred-and, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. At the same time, back when the boat was originally authorized to be purchased, there should have been a budget adjustment as part of that resolution, but there wasn't one. And so this resolution now is including that budget adjustment, which would actually recognize the revenue that was brought in by that unbudgeted code enforcement lien collection of the seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. And then of that amount, one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars will be transferred into the capital fund to fund the purchase of the boat, leaving the remainder to go into the reserve. So those are the two items. Again, it's just to correct the purchase amount by four-hundred-and-three dollars and then record the budget adjustment for that entire amount.
Thank you. Joe? John, any questions?
Yeah, I guess I wanna see some clarity. Is this, I'm trying to remember, is this boat was originally purchased because of the stolen boat? Or was this something altogether different?
Joe, let me help you with that, 'cause that came up at the Anchorage Advisory Committee, and it's a good question, John. The, this boat, the boat that's being acquired here that Joe is referencing has a different purpose and function than the boat that was stolen, as I was told by our harbor master. So if that's helpful for clarification, 'cause I had a similar question.
I guess it, it doesn't really clear it up for me, but, because now we have a, getting back to the fleet, we have the boat back originally, so, and we had insurance money for that. But I guess it was always my understanding that that was the original intent, was that this replaced that boat. It gave us, this boat gave us extra options and capabilities, yes, thank you, than the boat that had at one time been stolen.
That, that is correct. It increases the capability, our mooring, and mooring ball field capabilities and others that Curtis and his team can do. But, yeah, this was, I, I wasn't here, but I imagine the decision was made when the previous boat was stolen. Now we have recovered it.
Temporarily.
And it's in the process of being made seaworthy again, so.
I think that takes care of it, thank you.
Jim?
Nothing additional.
Rebecca?
Nothing.
Scott?
Nothing.
Thanks, Joe. All right, is there, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion for Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-five for fiscal year end budget adjustment and ratification of four-hundred-and-three dollars not to exceed for Scully's Aluminum Boat?
So moved.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor Safford? Beat you to the punch. Seconded by Councilmember Link. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Councilor Link?
Aye.
Councilors?
Adherold?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Next is Resolution twenty-five dash three-twenty-seven, Special Event Thirty-Fifth Annual Sand Sculpting Championships. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving during the American Sand Sculpting Championships from ten a.m. Thursday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, to five p.m. Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. One, open containers of alcohol in public areas as provided in accordance with sixteen-dash-oh-three section twenty-two-g. Two, waiving the standard vehicle permit fee for vehicles on the sand. Three, directing non-enforcement of the noise ordinance. Four, waiving parking fees at Palm Avenue Beach access parking lot for staging area, approximately fifteen spaces, pending all required safety approvals and providing for an effective date. Jackie?
All set. Good morning, Council. Thank you for having us here today. Jackie Lezak, President, CEO of the Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce, here on behalf of the Thirty-Fifth Annual American Sand Sculpting Championship and our partners, the Diamond Head Beach Resort and the Sand Lovers. Does anybody have any questions? And before I do that, we have secured our one-two-three-day alcohol permits, so those just came in this morning, so we'll be providing the town manager a copy of those licenses for the event as soon as I get back to the office.
John, any questions?
No questions.
Jim?
Never want to deny you an opportunity to hype the event. Do you have, you want to talk, just give an overview of the, when things open and when things begin, and just kind of just do your spiel?
Happy to. So Thursday, the twentieth of November, will run from Thursday through Monday. All day Thursday is free admission. We heard all of our constituents last year, and we're providing that day for free, compliments of Extreme of Florida and Gavin's Ace Hardware. They are sponsoring the front gate that day, so please come out. It's a day where the sculptors are beginning to build, and so you'll see some stuff finished, but you'll see other things in progress. Little bit lighter crowds usually on that day, great day to move around. The event area is twice the size as it was last year. Thank you to the Estero Island Beach Club for graciously giving us the sand area behind their venue there. And we will have all of our nonprofit partners working on the island for parking. Any of the money you pay to any nonprofit partner that's running a parking lot goes directly back to that nonprofit partner. The Chamber and the partners do not take any of that revenue. It's another way to spread the love of the event out across the entire island and make it a really great event for everyone. Admission is five dollars. You can buy advance tickets at F M B sandsculpting dot com, and you can buy a family pack of six for twenty-five dollars. Little bit of savings there. We're gonna have twenty-seven sculptors on site, twenty-one of who are competing, so we actually have some exhibition sculptors coming. They're actually in their Ubers on their way to us as we speak right now. Very exciting. They're coming from ten different countries, and we have twenty, like I said, twenty-seven of them. And we'll have over seventy vendors this year, everything from our nonprofits on the island and around the community here to jewelry, clothing, arts and crafts, entertainment. We'll have a face painter on site. We're gonna have a kid's sand pile area for the kids. We'll have a food eating area where you can relax in the shade and enjoy some great food. And the Diamond Head Beach Resort will have live music every evening after the event closes. So there is no charge for that live music, just come on in and enjoy the live music. We'll have what we're calling the big tent, and it is a supersized tent. I think it quite possibly may be the biggest tent we've ever seen on the island so far. So it's going to be forty by a hundred feet long, so it's, it's a huge tent with lots of shade. So please come out, please enjoy. This is a community event. We're thrilled to, to have it here. Thank you to Lee Tran. They've brought back their free tram. It starts on Thursday. So tram and trolley will be running. Thank you to the Seminole Casino. They'll providing free shuttle buses that will be making continuous loops on the island. All of the golf cart partners will be running their golf cart for transportation around the island. And I'm trying to think what else I'm missing, but I think that's about it. We're hoping for some Chamber of Commerce weather for all of the days. It looks pretty good, and we just can't wait to welcome you out to the event and bringing it back for the second year in a row.
Thanks, Jackie. This shuttle that you're talking about, could you just, it sounds a little different, and it sounds wonderful. Could you just give us a little more granularity on how the shuttle works?
For the Seminole Casino?
Yep.
Yes, so they will be running the loop of all the parking lots from the downtown area, old San Carlos area, all the way up to the library and back. There'll be two of them, and they'll just be making a continuous loop. They'll be stopping wherever the tram and trolley stops are to pick people up, drop people off, and they'll be bringing them right up to the Diamond Head. So the hope there is a little bit of air-conditioned transportation courtesy of the Seminole Casino, and get more people moving around. You don't have to drive your car right up to the event area. You can park further away and take some of this transportation so that you're not having to get into the, to the crowds or into traffic.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Rebecca, any questions?
No questions.
Scott?
Thank you.
Tread lightly?
Talk about volunteers.
Okay, we could definitely use some word volunteers on Sunday and Monday. This event takes six-hundred volunteers. So over the five days, we have two shifts from nine-thirty in the morning till one-thirty, and then from one o'clock till five. Volunteers will be doing anything from taking tickets, checking for wristbands, pointing folks in the right direction, answering questions. We have QR codes out there that you'll be able to do People's Choice Awards, so we've got lots of open jobs, especially on Sunday and Monday. We still need help, so please go onto F M B sandsculpting dot com. F M B, F for Fort, M for Myers, B for Beach, sandsculpting dot com. There's a link at the top, volunteer here, and just go into the signup genius and pick the spot that makes sense for you. When you're a volunteer, you get a free tee-shirt, you get a ticket to come back, you get lunch the day that you're working, and then if you volunteer with us, the Seminole Casino hosts the VIP party the week after the event, and they will send buses out to pick all of us up. We usually have two giant tour buses that go out to the casino for the night. They feed us, they give us some free drinks, they give you some free play, and you get free entertainment, and then you get a bus ride home. It's a great, great evening, so the perks of volunteering at this event are amazing, and plus you'll make new friends and meet a lot of great people, so please come on out.
I would like to speak to that, Jackie. How many volunteers did you say? How many more you'd like?
Six-hundred.
How many more you need?
I could probably use another hundred, hundred-and-fifty easily in slots.
And do they have to be all from Fort Myers Beach?
They do not.
You'll take them from anywhere?
Anywhere they want to come from, as long as they're willing to spend half a day with us or a full day with us, come on down.
Yes. Yes, and I'm wondering, could they possibly park at the, what is the free parking? Is it on Pine Ridge Road?
You could park out on Pine Ridge Road and take the trolley all the way in. Absolutely, yep. That's a great way to go. And trolley rates are 75 cents for adults, 35 cents for seniors. Once you hit the island, the free tram will be running, so you can hop on, hop off that.
The perks are great. I love the free Thursday, too.
It's a great, great, great day. It's a great weekend. It's just, you see so many people out there having a great time, families, friends, together, and then watching these amazing works of art come out of just piles of sand. These sculptors are incredibly talented. They do this all over the world, and we're so blessed to have them here.
Thanks, Jackie.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Just say yes.
All right, we have any other discussion? If not, is there a motion for Resolution 25-327? I will make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-327.
A little nervous there, guys.
Special event, 35th Annual American Sand Sculpting Championships. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Adheral. Any further discussion? I'm an aye.
Aye.
That was fast. Rebecca?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Now the work starts. All right, now we have final public comment. Does anyone wish to speak in final public comment? You want to go for a trifecta?
No?
No? Okay, we'll close public comment. Town manager items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a few items this morning. First, I'd like to propose the council's discretion or decision that maybe we do a joint council and LPA meeting to discuss the comp plan. We talked about the LPA, or having an additional LPA, special LPA meeting. We could possibly also consider maybe that being a joint meeting. I believe the date that works for the LPA members so far is the 25th, November 25th at 9:00 a.m. here at the Town Hall. Just like to make that proposal for, and leave it, you know, if, for consideration.
I wonder if it'd make more sense to, based on some of the comments, if it would make more sense to have like a roundtable discussion, where then you could go into a meeting based on those discussions. Does that make sense? Or we're just kind of running out of time. I don't want to leave people out who maybe have some suggestions that could be incorporated into the, what the new comp plan will be before we finally have to adopt it on the first. Is that putting a lot of pressure? Go ahead, Jim.
Well, no, I mean, there, as you're all well aware, there have been lots of public, public meetings on this topic to include multiple charrette, you know, awareness opportunities, public comment. And we did, I wasn't here at the time, but I know that there was participation from the community, and it was well advertised by the town, those events. So we certainly, if that's, if that's the council's direction, we could certainly try to schedule another one based on past, I don't know what, you know, what the turnout would be, but we could try. But again, I think if we did a joint session, you know, the public, it's a public hearing, it's a public meeting, public could come in, you know, bring their comments during that meeting as well.
Will, were you suggesting November 25th?
Correct.
The week of Thanksgiving?
Yes, the Tuesday before.
I unfortunately will not be in town, but I could call in, I guess, if I needed to.
Well, you could, you could, you could call in. I just wanted to make sure that there's also maybe an opportunity for the council, you know, to have a public meeting before having to make a decision on the first. That was just a recommendation.
Scott, what do you think, Councilor?
I'm all for it. If LPA is willing.
You're off. Apologize. I'm all for it. I think as we saw this morning, we still have some work to do, and let's get the public involved, and I know it's tough with Thanksgiving, but you know, if you can't make it, please send us emails prior, and you know, you need to have an open dialogue, so I think it's a fantastic idea. Thank you, Will.
All right. Rebecca, you have any issues?
I agree. Will, thank you very much for accommodating us. I know that this was advertised. I think there were a lot of folks who are busy still digging out from the storm, and we appreciate it.
John?
Anytime you can engage in dialogue with the public, it's a good thing.
Jim, you already said you were going to be gone that day.
I'll be out of town, but I could call in if possible, if it's here in this room.
Yeah, I would be here, I would assume, so.
Yes, no problem accommodating.
I can be here on the 25th, so.
Okay.
Do you need a formal motion or anything, Nancy, for that? Just general consensus?
Yeah. Consensus is fine. The direction is clear, and I think we can proceed.
Okay.
Do you have a time on there?
It'll be 25th at 9:00 a.m. here in the Town Hall. We will send out the public notice, and as soon as we can finish up today, Amy will get that out. Next, I'd like to announce that we, Senator Scott's staff will hold mobile office hours here at the Town Hall on the 24th of November from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Just wanted to make sure you're all aware of that, and again, we'll advertise through public service announcement as well.
Can I just add to that? It's a great opportunity when they're in town. If you have a social security issue, an immigration issue, a veterans issue, anything to do with a federal agency, it's a great way to work with their staff to get any of your issues or questions addressed. They do an excellent job, and so again, if you know of somebody who's got a federal issue with a federal agency, it's a great time to get some assistance.
I'll just echo that as well, having had to have them help intercede with FEMA on some things. And I know this was rescheduled because it had to be canceled because of the government shutdown, so it's a fantastic staff and very, very helpful.
Thank you all. And since you mentioned FEMA, tomorrow, tomorrow, we officially come off FEMA probation. I think it's November 18th, right? Is officially when the town comes off probation. And this morning, I received a terrific notification from FEMA that Town of Fort Myers Beach has satisfactorily addressed the administrative floodplain management concerns identified during the community assistance visit. The cab is now closed. We've successfully met all of the requirements for FEMA. So I'd like to just, you know, say, this is a huge milestone, huge accomplishment by the team, by the staff. Dr. Kohler led a terrific team of community development, really emergency services, really the whole staff, just working tirelessly for several months now to address every one of those concerns, and also help, you know, I'd also like to thank the community for joining in the effort to get us into compliance, whether it be their, their personal land, property issues, businesses, and other issues on the island. I'd just like to thank everybody, thank the staff, tremendous work, and really a huge congratulations to the, to the team for the, all the extra effort they put in, and to FEMA for being willing to work with us as much as we wanted, needed them to on a daily basis sometimes, with all the questions that we had and trying to address all the concerns. Just a terrific accomplishment by the team. We will now continue to move forward. It doesn't close the door completely because it's an ongoing process. I'd also like to say that to all the members of our community, that there are still properties that need to come into compliance, and businesses that need to come into compliance and so forth, and there will be continual, right? We want to, we don't want to go back to where we were. We want to take what we've learned and continue to apply it forward, so that, you know, we just, everything we do now from here, from here on forward is in compliance, and we can just, you know, continue to build the island back.
Congratulations, because that is fantastic news, and thank you, Dr. Kohler. I know Tommy Azza was involved with a lot of that, Frank Caprocheck, all the others. Just thank you also very much.
Go ahead, Jim. I just had a question. Congratulations, significant accomplishment, just for the folks who are listening. Again, significant accomplishment, but just so people understand, this now opens the door for us to then make application for the flood insurance discount. Is that, is that a fair characterization?
That is, thank you. Thank you, Councilor.
And then just kind of expand maybe on that timeline.
Yeah, so I'll hand it over to Tracy here in a moment, but luckily, before the government shutdown started, we had, we had already begun transmitting information and having back and forth discussions with the, the office that'll assist us with the CRS application process, and now we can start that again, so Tracy.
Thank you. Will, first of all, yeah, we're so excited to have received our clearance letter from Jackie Bell and our colleagues from FEMA Region 4 all the way on up. It's very exciting to have that information. In the end, we were approximately 81% compliant of the 252 properties that they had identified, and as Will had said, we are still working diligently with the residents to come into compliance, because they're never truly, their eyes are never off of us, right? We're continuing to work. So yes, we've made entrance into the CRS for consideration. I did send an email immediately upon receiving Jackie Bell's letter, requesting what our status could potentially be and a timeline, because as Will said, we submitted documentation in hopes and in anticipation that we'd be able to move forward in the process. So what that discount may be, we don't know. It could be, hey, you're entered into CRS, your discount is at zero, but now you can move forward with more percentages. Or it could be, you know, maybe we'll give you a 5%, you know, we have a way to move along the continuum, just getting into the CRS is the biggest deal.
Yeah, I think to say, it'd be an understatement to say this, a Herculean effort that the staff has worked tirelessly on for quite a long time to get, to navigate through the intricacies, if you will, of figuring out exactly what is needed, what is wanted, what is looked for. And, you know, there's so many people to thank, I think, for this, that, I mean, you could go on and on and on, but, you know, obviously Senator Scott, Congressman Donalds, everyone, and our lobbyists up in DC have certainly helped us get into doors to be able to have conversations, to get direction to where we need to go. Their staffers have all been helpful, obviously. I mean, I could go on and on and on, but this was truly a total delegation team effort to get to here, but staff, you guys had the heavy, you had the heavy workload to be able to carry to cross the finish line, so.
Including yourself, Mayor.
Well, it was a team effort. Rebecca, any?
Yes. So I also have to say, congratulations. I work with the federal government every day and understand the Ts and the Cs and every single thing. And congratulations, I mean, congratulations. I know the effort, everyone, and like you said, the town as well. Thank you. Thank you for all that hard work. I think, I think we'll be seeing a bigger discount than we thought as time goes on.
There you go. Will, what else you got? Now, Scott, you got something you want to say?
No, I just want to thank Dr. Kohler. I, I know how hard you worked on that, and how stressed out you were, and just fantastic job, not only to you, but to everyone, but I knew you kind of spearheaded it, so fantastic work. Thank you.
Final item I'd like to bring up is, is late Friday, I received initial response from the school district of Lee County on our first proposal that the mayor and I made at the conflict assessment meeting. Received that late Friday, and just to briefly go over some of the items in it, they, of course, acknowledged that, know, that it's only a recommendation for moving forward from the school district. They would still need board approval on any, any agreements or conveyances. But what they rec, what they offer, they're prepared to explore conveying the historic building to the town outright, rather than a long-term lease. They would, they would like to discuss subdividing or parcelling out that property in an as-is capacity. Also, they talk of, that we've expressed interest in operating a charter school, and they offer their assistance in helping us to achieve that goal. So there would be some continued discussions there. However, unfortunately, they still, still are, are stating that the, our request for a portion of the FEMA disaster relief funding would not be possible, because that has already been allocated to repay their lap loan. I think there's still some discussion to be had there. But I just, I'd like to acknowledge that we did receive the response from them, so we continue the process going forward. Our discussions with staff, the district staff continue. I have forwarded a request to the deputy superintendent for access to the building as soon as possible, so I can, so I can go with my team and conduct an assessment of the facility to see exactly what it is we would be receiving if we were to agree to any of these. So I'm waiting for a response from him. He's been very responsive for me in these requests, so I don't anticipate that taking too long, because I know I would want to do that before I could provide further advice to the council. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody on the council was aware of that and offer it up for discussion this morning.
Jim?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Will, you deserve a Nobel Peace Prize for the diplomacy in which you've exercised, characterizing that response. Having sat through that mediation with the mayor and our team for four hours in good faith, certainly from our end, I was honestly stunned by the response. I will try to employ some of Will's diplomacy, but I'm going to let a little of it go, because what Will, in essence, has said is, okay, we'll cede you the old school building, and we will give you no money to build a new school. That is incongruent with what members of the school board said. Ironically, the member of the school board who has been somewhat supportive and is also tasked with being our liaison to the mediation, school board member Ribble, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but I believe his initial thoughts were, you know, we're concerned about the managing that, that old school building, and, but we would be very open to building you a new school. And that was, you know, understandable and a reasonable position, and one that we certainly acknowledged, and we thought about when we offered our proposal to the school district. So it's odd to me that they responded by saying, okay, you can have the old building, or at least we'll cede it to you, but we will then offer no money for you to build a new school on Fort Myers Beach. That's obviously very unacceptable. It's unacceptable to the parents on the ad hoc committee. I would assume it's unacceptable to my colleagues here. I know it's only the first round of negotiations, and it is a negotiation, but it just does not appear as if the administration is dealing in good faith, because at a minimum in the ILA, they've already promised us to build a cafeteria that's over $6 million. That's, they said it was in their budget, so for them to offer no financial support to build a new school building, which would be juxtaposed next to the historic building, is stunning and quite honestly disappointing.
Well, I'll try to be as diplomatic as you were. I agree, when I saw that letter, I was very disappointed. I thought it was pretty much a slap in the face. I thought we were moving down the right road at that mediation meeting. Everybody was nodding their head in what looked like they thought this would be a good solution. We have repeatedly went to them in good faith and made offers to them, which we didn't feel we had to do, but in the spirit of getting the end goal, of getting these kids back in school, we felt it was in the best interest of the community to do so, and to read that letter was, I guess I'm a little confused. You can write a letter to our staff saying, this is what we're thinking, but it still has to go through the board. You didn't have a discussion with the board as to what they thought. As you said, there have been at least two members, potentially three, that have said, we will not put any money into the old school, but we will, there will, one actually said there will be a school back on that island. That was said by one of the members, who is now the chair. The one that was in the mediation also has said there should be a school on that island. So I consider this a slap in the face offer, not a offer of negotiation, and maybe that's a little bit harsh, but I stand back and go, you know, again, our ultimate goal is to get these kids back in school. It seems that they maybe have some ulterior motives as to what they think they can or cannot do with that land, and I want to remind them that that land is zoned in a way that we think it is appropriately zoned for, which is for a school. So parsing off land doesn't seem to make sense, and I would even offer another suggestion to your point. You know, you've, they've openly said that $6 million has been budgeted for and that it, it was in the ILA as a requirement to do, so to come back with no offer, to me, is insulting.[1746.33] So to come back with no offer, to me, is insulting. It, it, it says that we wasted four hours of our time, a mediator's time, our residents' time, the kids' time, their time. Everybody's time was wasted based on this counterproposal, if you would. I don't know that we need to go back and change our proposal, but I guess I would suggest, I'm open to doing anything. If, if in fact they don't want to put any money toward this school, do we want to consider looking at, give us the six million dollars then that you have already budgeted for, for the school, that you've openly agreed to in an ILA that we already have, to build back a, to build back something that you've chosen not to do? And then give us the land. If you want to give up the land and you don't want to build the school there, let us take it all over. Give us the money that you've already budgeted for and then get out of our way. Because this back and forth, to me, is wasting a lot of time and the only ones suffering are our kids. Maybe I wasn't as diplomatic as I should have been. But I'm just, again, this is in, this is just in good faith, trying to have open discussion, because they certainly don't want to have open discussions, for whatever reason. They would rather make decisions behind closed doors and then hide behind, well, the board has ultimately to say it. Well, then put it in front of your board and let them make the decision. Stop making the decision for the elected officials.
It seems like we, from the get-go, have tried to negotiate in good faith and we keep getting shut out, or spurned, or ignored, or, we always, again, make, make the attempt and it, and it's very sad on, on, on that part of that school district. And there's, there's, as both of you have said previously, there seems to be a schism between the board and, and the, the district administration itself. So just very, very disappointed.
Rebecca, would you like to add your two cents?
Oh, I always do.
Please do.
So my comments actually are to you, Mayor. Are you suggesting that Fort Myers becomes, Fort Myers Beach becomes a sub-recipient of those FEMA funds, of the six million, and then we take all responsibility and ownership for building back?
Well, it's always been my position that I think that the eleven-point-three-four million that was asked for, specifically administered for, and has not been spent on, should have been passed through. That was our initial offer. But again, I sit up here willing to negotiate a little bit, but the continued slaps in the face, to me, are getting a little bit old. And, and I'm calling on that board to step up and do your job. Step up and, and give direction to your administration, one way or another. You're, you're punishing these poor kids and these poor families over negotiation and wasting time and wasting resources, and LCSOS to have ten cops out there to protect people is nonsense. Just do what you said you were going to do. It's not that hard.
Thank you for clarifying.
Anyway, Scott?
So what are our next steps?
If I could just add to the mayor's comments, the, the six million dollars for the cafeteria is already in the budget, already in the ILA. It's a no-brainer. The fact that that wasn't even referenced was insulting. I would also say that the district, for the last three years, has been, been trying to make an argument that, that they're, that they're bearing a, a financial cost to subsidizing the school. We would be taking that risk from them, and that's a significant financial shift from the school district, at least in terms of how they calculate the numbers, to the town of Fort Myers Beach. That should also be part of the calculation. So that, that's what gets us to the twelve-million-dollar number. In addition to the mayor's point, it's also the amount of money roughly that they ask from FEMA, using the plight of our island to justify and then shifting those funds elsewhere. So there's so many potential outrages here. I, I would encourage us to continue at the staff level to have conversations, but to the mayor's point, this at some point needs to go to the school board and hopefully, again, we've seen some wonderful leadership on the school board, hopefully they will come forward and, and, and help fulfill their obligations.
I would, yeah, I guess my, my position would be to direct staff, our staff, to tell them, we want you to take this to your school board for discussion. Let them make the decision. They're the elected officials. Let them make the decision on what a counterproposal, if there should be a counterproposal, what it should be. Why is the staff making the decision for them and then saying, this isn't finalized, we still have to take it to the board? You're putting the cart before the horse. Make your recommendations to your board and let your board make the decision, and they're not doing that. Which to me just goes back to actions speak louder than words. And their actions are speaking much louder than their words.
It, it's not their actions, it's their inaction. I mean.
Better said, yes.
It's, I, I'm so frustrated right now, but, you know, what, again, what, what do you recommend next steps be, Will?
So this is, this is helpful, council members. I appreciate it. You know, I want, I need, I was seeking some guidance from the council and I've gotten some, and I appreciate that, in addition to the previous council discussions on this matter. What I plan on doing next is, is taking that and, you know, and the, the letter received and having discussions with staff as far as, you know, administratively, what's, as far as the staff, what's possible. And then I'll, I'll also speak with legal counsel. The next opportunity for either the, the board, the, the school board and council are, there are count, that there's a board meeting and a council meeting on the first of December. We have a council meeting on that morning. The next, but that is the next school board meeting. There won't, they won't be going, coming together as a, as a quorum again until then. And anything that needs to get on the board agenda has to go through the workshop earlier that day first, and I think, what is it, Tracy, a one week ahead of time?
So typically, what goes on the workshop is not actually for the council meeting that evening. It's on the council meeting for the, sorry, board meeting that evening. It's for the board meeting the following month. So to get it on a workshop on December first means that it goes to the council in January, but the board meeting is the same day. I think it's at five or six o'clock.
But, but they have shown that they are not afraid to put things on a workshop and then at the last minute walk it on as a placeholder. So they can't give us an excuse that they can't make it happen.
Understood.
So that, my, my intention is to work it and work in this, this guidance from the council and convey, as I will, Mr. Mayor, convey to, to them. We'd like to see them bring this to their board as, as soon as possible, to get the board to discuss it and vote on it.
And I would like to hear what Mr. Remy has to say. I mean, he, he was very adamant that he wanted to see some of this, he wanted to see this move forward. At least that's my recollection from the mediation, is that he said if we felt that any reason we weren't moving forward or we, to let him know, I, I would say we would let him know as well. This, unless he doesn't. I'm assuming he probably already has seen the letter, but if he hasn't, I don't, as a mediator, I don't understand how a mediator could actually look at that and think that's a good faith counteroffer.
That's a good point. I'll get clarification on that, Mr. Mayor, as well.
Yeah, that was going to be my questions, what, what he thought of that.
Okay, is that it?
That's enough for today, Mr. Mayor.
Sure you didn't want to end with the FEMA part?
We discussed that, but I think it's, we can go back to that if you want.
No, that's all right. Yeah, all right. Nothing else, Will?
Just a procedural question. Will, will you be releasing that letter, which certainly would be available for folks if they make a public request to the, to the town?
It is available.
I'm sure someone already has.
All right, thank you. Town attorney items.
Just to follow up, so did you all want an agenda item for, on the first in the morning to kind of see where we are with this, or?
I suppose, yes. I mean, anybody have any objection to that?
So kind of an update?
No.
Okay, and then the other thing I wanted to add and to supplement what, what Will stated is there is a step two of the chapter one sixty-six, or one sixty-four process, and that is where the elected bodies that are in dispute, which would be town council as well as the school board, do have a joint meeting. Obviously, we're not there yet, and they haven't had the opportunity to provide comments as you have had today. You actually get two bites at the apple, because you will have a morning meeting on December the first. So it sounds like with Will's work, this is kind of an evolving issue. I got the easy one, as far as the school board. So in your packet, the next item is Resolution twenty-five dash three twenty-four. Mayor, if you could read the title, this is the First Amendment to the Lee County School Board ILA.
This is Resolution twenty-five dash three twenty-four, First Amendment to Lee County School Board ILA. It's a resolution of the town council of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving a first amendment to the inter-local agreement dated May fifth, two thousand twenty-three by and between the town of Fort Myers Beach and the school board of Lee County, Florida, to suspend activities of the ad hoc committee during chapter one sixty-four meetings between the town and the school board of Lee County, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment and providing for an effective date.
So it's, it's very simple, that the ad hoc group that had been created by that agreement would not be meeting while we're doing the chapter one sixty-four meetings.
Okay. Jim?
I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, but you go ahead. Do you need any public comment? All right.
I don't think we need a public comment, do we?
It's available, but.
Nope. Then I would, I, I, this is just, this is just a housekeeping matter, it makes perfect sense. I move approval of Resolution twenty-five dash three twenty-four.
I'll second.
All right, got a motion by Councilor Adherolt, seconded by Vice Mayor Safford. Any further discussion? Councilor Adherolt?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Safford?
Aye.
Councilor Link?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries unanimously. Okay, council member items and reports. Scott, we'll start with you.
I have nothing.
Rebecca?
Nothing.
Jim?
Ditto.
John?
Let me get to it.
All right.
I had a meeting last week where I chaired the executive board for the, the County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Found out that they will be sending out a survey today. If you've not already received it in your email, it is coming today. Asked Will to send you, contact you all to let you know not to delete that survey and to take it seriously and, and please answer it. The federal government and, and the state, to some extent, are wanting to combine the Lee County MPO with the Collier County MPO. They cannot force the merger, but they would strongly like it to happen because of the growth in the area. The problem is, is that, as I see it just for us, is we would go from twenty-seven members combined on the two committees to, the maximum you can have is twenty-five. So that means two members would be left off. And honestly, I don't know about Collier, but I got a feeling for Lee it would be us, because we are the smallest. So I don't think it's in our best interest to do that. They are sending it to every local official in both counties. You have ten days to respond, they'd like it back by eleven-twenty-six. If there is a merger to take place, it is required by seventy-five percent of the municipalities in each county. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
John, do you have any sense as to how the question will be phrased and any advice as to how we should approach the question here, or will it be self-evident?
It's very self-evident. I, I had already taken it about three weeks ago as a test. It's pretty, it's pretty easy. But I think the, well, it's hard to get a rule, reading on, on the committee. My gut is that they would really rather not merge, but I, I don't know that to be a fact. We haven't really discussed it at that level yet.
Thank you.
I did want to mention something, since we're discussing committee assignments and things like that. The Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership, CHINEP, is, which we are a member of and, and I represent the council on that committee, contacted us about some extra federal funding to potentially assist the town's natural resource projects and efforts. Dollars could be in the amount of anywhere from a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, up to half a million dollars. I don't know, Will, if you want to discuss that any further, but it's, I think it's a fantastic opportunity for us. And I know, I think Will has assigned Frankie and Chad to look at pursuing that.
That's exactly right. There's a lot of great opportunities in there. Chad is digging into it and will have some recommendations back.
Very good.
I think it's very exciting. And, and lastly, the Florida League of Cities President Holly Smith has appointed me to the League's twenty-twenty-five Legislative Committee. That's meeting coming up in December fifth and sixth, I believe. I don't know if it's copacetic to do it there or not, but my plan is to try and utilize that opportunity to bring the power of the over four-hundred member municipalities behind my effort to change the state's flawed recall statute. And that's all I have.
I do not have anything new to add. That brings us to our advisory committees. We have to appoint someone to each one of our internal and external committees. So the first one is the Anchorage Advisory Committee. The current liaison is Mr. Adherolt.
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to continue to serve, unless someone else feels strongly about it.
Anyone have any objection? Okay. Audit Committee is now Vice Mayor Safford.
Well, I have a question for Rebecca. I know you did a lot of work with the CB DGR stuff. Would you, I'd be willing to, to switch with Bay Oaks, I mean, I had so much fun at that pickleball tournament.
I think, honestly, I think you're. It's with the microphone part. I think you're better with the finances, Scott, than I am.
Okay. I'm, I'm willing to continue.
Okay, anyone have any objection to that? No? Borca, Bay Oaks, was formerly Councilor Woodson?
I will take that if there's an empty spot.
I do not have any objection to that. Anyone have any objection to that? Congratulations, you are now the liaison. Selkab, Mr. Adherolt, that's you.
I have a wonderful team of folks. I'm happy to continue to serve if everyone feels okay with it.
Any objection?
None.
None? Next is Murph. It's currently Councilmember King. Councilmember King, would you like to continue to serve on that board?
Most assuredly.
Okay, is there any objection to that?
None.
All right. And then last is Public Safety Committee. I'll happily continue to do that one if no one else has any objection to it.
None.
There, just a, as a point of order, there's, there's one, I'm, I'm currently on the Charter Review Committee, and that wasn't in here. I just want to make sure that it's okay if I stay on that.
Yeah, I don't.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, just, well, it wasn't in here, so.
Yeah, well, it's a one, it's a one-off that, yeah.
Yeah.
Next is our outside committees. The first is the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership Policy Committee. The current represents, current, current person is Mr. King. Check, nah, you just talked about it.
CHINIP.
CHINIP. I added the A. CHINIP, would you like to continue serving on that policy committee?
Sure.
Okay, any objection to that? Coastal Advisory Committee, that is currently Mr. Schutz. Is he comfortable with continuing that, I'm assuming?
Well, yeah, by all means, he, he would be our staff representative, but if, if the council wants to have a council member be advisor on there as well, we're open to that.
I think he, he's doing just fine.
Absolutely.
Next is the Fort Myers Beach Elementary School Youth Council. I'm currently on that, but I don't know that we've ever had a meeting or what, no one's ever contacted me about it, but.
During my time, I, actually, when I saw this on the agenda, I was like, oh, what is that? As a principal, I had never heard of it.
But I, I'll continue to, to, to do it should something arise.
Sounds good.
Unless someone has an objection? Horizon Council, that's actually incorrect. I'm on that Horizon Council now. I'll continue to do that if no one else has any objection to it or would like to do it. Okay. MPO, it's currently Councilor King. Would you like to continue on the MPO path?
I'd like to see the end of my chairmanship for both committees, so yes.
Very good. No objection, I assume?
No.
Thank you for all your hard work on that, too, John. I know you put in a lot of time and effort on that. Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, the town receives reports upon request. It's, seems to be another one that's just zoning and staff. The Southwest Florida Resilient Coalition, it's currently Mr. Haugie? Is, Will, is Mr. Haugie going to continue in that position?
Yes.
Okay. The TDC, currently that is me. I would be willing to let someone else take a run at that if they would like. Perhaps maybe vice, I mean, that would fit right in your wheelhouse with what Jackie does. I thought it would be.
I'd be honored.
It's kind of your wheelhouse, not that I haven't enjoyed it, but you, you'd probably be a better fit, I think, than I would at this point.
I know, I know a lot of the people, you know, at TDC, so I'd be honored.
Anyone have any objection to that? And I think that has to go through the BOCC, they'll have to approve you at some point, but I think Amy handles all that. Okay, that is it. If there is nothing else, Mr. King?
I'll quote, without a microphone, I'll quote a favorite group of mine from the sixties and the seventies, Rare Earth. "I put my faith in the people, but the people let me down, so I turned the other way and